I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty to us all.
Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 9th in the year 2025. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Bergen Record, L. Espelito, and posted with the city clerk on September 5th of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public.
Okay, thank you, Cam. Could we have a roll call, please?
All right. Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Commissioner Wick.
Here.
Commissioner Stomato.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
We have six commissioners present. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please, Mike?
I see Joe, Tanya, Sophia, Matt, and Cam. You guys ready to swear? Tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Do we have correspondence, Cam?
Yes, Chairman. Okay, so in new business continued, starting with item 16, case P 2025-0048. This is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances. Address is 590 Grand Street. They've requested to carry with preservation of notice to October 7th. That is next, yeah, first meeting next month. Next, item 17 on the agenda, P 2023-0107. Address is 590 Grand Street. This is for a preliminary major site plan and preliminary and final major site plan with variances. This is requesting to carry also to October 7th of this year. Requesting to carry with preservation of notice to October 7th. Then item 19 on the agenda, case P 2024-0199. This is for a minor site plan with C variances. Address is 10 Exchange Place. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to October 7th of this year. And then, bear with me, it's the last two cases. Item 23, case P 20, uh, case P 2024-0226, preliminary and final major site plan. Address is 3085 JFK Boulevard. Requesting to carry with preservation of notice to October 7th, 2025. And then the very last item on the agenda, item 24, case P 2025-0096. This is a site plan amendment and an extension. The address is 195 Hudson Street, and they've requested to carry with preservation of notice to October 7th of this year. So in total, that's five items requesting to carry with... Yeah, the first one was item 16, and that was P 2025-0048, 590 Grand.
Okay, thanks, Cam. So let's move on to... These are all adjournments. Let's move on to old business seven and call item A. It's case P 2025-0159. Is a one-year extension of existing approvals from P 22-092 for 279 Communipaw Avenue.
Mr. Chair, just as council is approaching, can I put on the record that I've arrived?
Yes, please, if we could, let the record show that Commissioner Lipsky is at the dais. Good evening, Council.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Higgins of Castano Quigley Chirami, on behalf of the applicant. This is 279 Communipaw. This is the first extension. It was previously approved January 10th, 2023. Those approvals expired January 10th of this year. The applicant just needs one additional year, which would take us to January 10th, 2026.
Okay, any reason?
They just need a little bit of more time to procure financing.
Okay. All right. Any questions, anybody?
No.
All right, thank you, Council. Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment?
Mr. Chair, saying no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Planning staff asks that all of the original conditions from the original approval in 2022 remain in effect under the extension.
That's fine.
And planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2025-0159 as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
On a motion to approve, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Wick.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
All right, thank you. So let's go to item nine under new business. It's case P 2025-0027. Is the review and discussion of amendments to the Bait Street redevelopment plan regarding the provision of an affordable housing bonus. Formal action may be taken tonight. Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Charles Harrington of Connel Foley, on behalf of the applicant for this. I, I am respectfully requesting if I could be bumped one. I don't see my planner here yet, Mr. Flynn. So if I know there's the next agenda item is our proposed amendments as well.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. Okay, so let's move on to item 10. It's case P 2025-0152. Is a review and discussion of amendments to the zoning map regarding rezoning areas in and around Route 139 and incorporation of IZO compliance provisions, part of Phase 3 master plan implementation. This was initiated by planning staff, and formal action may be taken.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. This has been a, this is an effort that we picked up over several months ago. We've communicated these changes to the council people at large and in Ward C and D. And the formation of this has changed a little bit, but the, the scope of the, this component of Phase 3 implementation of the master plan can be partially summed up here on this map that was provided and published to the data portal. This is an effort to look at the upper Route 139 gateway and the recommended gateway zoning in the master plan. So in looking at that recommendation, in the master plan, it looked at perhaps making a brand-new zone wholesale, which was done in other gateways. We adopted the NC 2 zone on Communipaw Avenue, which is a six-story zone. But the context here was a bit different, and the community outreach and comments we received from some council people led us to assign some of the lots that are currently zoned R1 or G, the government zone, to three different other zones. We have some area here in purple proposed from going from R1 to NC 1. We have lots in red, which I'll scroll up, closer to Kennedy Boulevard, that are going from R1 to R3. And then we have two lots in the more eastern side, and then two lots in the more western side of this strip that are being proposed from going from either R1 or G zone, the government zone, to the RC 3. And I, to sum up what these zones are, more generally, the NC 1 zone is, was the neighborhood commercial zone that's been in existence prior to the master plan adoption. This is that five-story Main Street-type zoning, mixed-use zoning. R3 is a residential primary zone, which does allow for some mixed use. So we thought that that is a proper designation here, and it allows from all the way up to eight stories. And this being across 139 from Journal Square, we thought that that context of graduating heights, as we move further to, to the west, being the more kind of crossroads of the gateway here on Route 139 being appropriate. And then lastly, the RC 3 lots that are zoned R1 or G. Frankly, the G zone was recommended to just be completely retired in our zoning. This particular lot that's on Oakland Avenue is not even owned by Jersey City or Hudson County. I believe it's owned by a nonprofit. Last time I checked the property records, and we thought that the, the heights that, that zone results in were appropriate for some of these lots along this strip that aren't necessarily R1 and aren't necessarily NC or, or R3. So in addition to this map, there, there was a small text change that was required as well. And it's on this document here that was also posted to the portal. So there's a small change to the, what we're calling the compliance provision in these different zones. And the reason why we did this was to kind of just be more, to kind of headline or billboard the fact that in these changes, as a result of these changes, the inclusionary zoning ordinance was triggered. And we still applied this to lots that received enough zoning. So there were previously, there was no compliance provision paragraph in the NC 1 zone, but we still applied it to projects that perhaps received enough zone in prior implementations of the master plan. But we're including that now and clarifying some language. We realized that we didn't really, we were going, we were giving too much information, and we kind of just simplified it by removing out the square feet of the area and just talking about how if you were a lower-density zone and are now zoned one of these, these properties, that IZO would be triggered if you, you have a project that results in 15 units or more. So that is the text. And the last item really here is the master plan consistency. So there is a report that we prepared, and regarding master plan consistency, and surprise, surprise, city planning found it to be consistent.
Imagine that.
But, so I've already gone over the, the scope of these amendments. But the, the purpose for us honing in on this corridor is that the land settlement of the, our Jersey City master plan identified this corridor as, as a need to rezone property in and around 139 to establish a gateway commercial zone. And the stated goal for that is to improve the public realm to lessen nuisance impacts to nearby residential neighborhoods and reduce the prevalence of drive-in commercial activities in favor of uses oriented to the street frontage. These zones that are being recommended for this corridor would result in that, and they'd further that goal and objective. The major issue for 139, as identified in the master plan, is that it's designed as a barrier separating Journal Square from the heights. And to better stitch these neighborhoods together, connect community facilities, open spaces, transit nodes, these land uses will, will better push a state route towards, towards being a, less of a barrier between these neighborhoods. And that is the stated outcome and hopeful outcome of permitting these, these districts in this area. So there is connectivity and mobility goals and objectives that are achieved by this rezoning. There's economic opportunity that is achieved by this, by like promoting development of a diversified economy, establishing a 15-minute city, embedding in flexibility into retail. And there's also equity, social equity, that, that is furthered by, by this proposed change, prioritizing reinvestment, accommodating population growth and growing needs. This is a fast corridor smack dab in the city, splitting off two major areas. And we really see a major positive of these changes. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Any questions, anybody?
So Matt, I'm just curious, in the digital era, how do we connect the previous map so that when I'm looking at a provision that says lots that were zoned, is that, are all the old zoning maps available on the portal and?
Yeah, so part of the record for this case is, was this zoning map. This is a map, the zoning map that was dated February 5th, 2021. So we're taking the, we're taking a map that was put into place in and around the time that the IZO was adopted, and we're putting it part of this record. That's hopefully one way to capture it. It is something that administratively, we probably should make easier to do. Perhaps this map, this same map should be posted on the city planning page as a reference with, with regards to questions about the inclusionary zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I would think and hope that, you know, these, if it references something, I can then go and find whatever that reference would be. And I don't know, you're able to zoom in on these maps and pinpoint the lots if they remain on the portal and?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. This is a PDF document that, given the power of my computer, will be able to go far into pinpointing an individual lot. So as I zoom in on this document, it kind of goes from a crystallized image to a more clear image on, on these lots. So this purple right here, that is the, that is the, the lot that's being zoned, RC 3. On the other map, as you can see, an adjacent polygon here that, which is a school, as opposed to, I think, a nonprofit-owned lot. So not as necessary to rezone at this moment, but it is, that is the G zone. And then you can see everything else along this corridor is without a color, or white, I guess you could say. But that is the R1 zone, the annotation being up in this area. So you can identify that, clearly identify that everything along this strip, with the exception of that one lot, is owned R1. And so that's why we put it in the, as one of the attachments in, in this amendment or rezoning.
In other places, less is advanced. You still have to go down to the City Hall and ask for documents. And then there are references to documents that don't exist, so.
Yeah, I think in cases where this has come up, and it's, you know, some of the changes from R1 to NC previously, there's not that many lots. We've communicated it to a property owner upon submission of an application or zoning determination.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, any other questions? Anybody?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application?
Saying no public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, we have your recommendation, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve case P 2025-0152 as presented to the board here tonight and forward to City Council for formal adoption.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Wick.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Yes, so I believe this is compliant with the master plan. I think it's exactly what was envisioned when we redid the master plan. And I'm going to vote I do forward it to City Council with a recommendation.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Do we have Mr. Harrington back yet, or no?
Yes.
We good? Okay, so let's go back to, I lost my spot, Chuck. All right, number nine. Case P 2025-0027 is the review and discussion of amendments to the Bait Street redevelopment plan regarding the provision of affordable housing bonus. Formal action may be taken tonight.
Okay, thank you. Again, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connel Foley, on behalf of the applicant. These amendments are being proposed by my clients who own property on the northernmost tax block within the Bait Street redevelopment plan. They have an existing approval that they obtained from this board a number of years ago for a five-story building and 100 units. And we have been working with the planning office and Councilman Gilmore's office on, on these proposed changes for some time. And the reason they, they came about, and, and this, this amendment would be across the board for the mixed-use zone, residential zone within the redevelopment plan, is that my client's property at the northernmost tax block, it has kind of a unique zoning that when, when this plan was adopted in 2006, where it provided that the entire tax block had to be developed as one. My client only owns 80% of the entire tax block. They made efforts to obtain the rest of it that did not occur or, or wasn't feasible. So the, the zoning defaults to the NC zoning. So that's, that's what happened with the, the application before this board, where we went five, five stories. But interestingly, the, the redevelopment plan has height bonus provisions within it, that you can go up to six stories, you can go up to 10 stories and 12 stories. But this tax block could not take advantage of those or use those because the, of the underlying provision that it would have to be ta, developed with the entire tax block. So we worked with, with planning and, and the councilman's office and what we're, there are some tweaks to, to the general regulations, but essentially, it's an affordable housing bonus provision within the plan that would apply across the, the mixed-use district that would permit you to go up to 12 stories, with the understanding that you'd have 10% affordable units and, and compliant with the, the Jersey City's inclusionary zoning ordinance. The, the approval we have right now is 100 units without any affordable units. So this would, would open that up and provide for a 12-story building on this site, which, as I stated, is already permitted at certain areas within the plan already. So that is really, you know, the general crux of it. And there is, there's a parking provision as well that, that was provided for this. I believe it's .3 per bedroom. And I do have our planner here to, to testify as to, with regard to its consistency with the master plan.
Okay, thank you, Council.
No, I'm all right, thank you. I do. Yeah, Matt Flynn, F L Y N N.
Mr. Flynn, have we qualified you in the past? I don't recall.
Virtually, you have.
Virtually, okay. So, different times. So is your license current tonight as a planner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Flynn, could you please give the board the benefit of your opinion as to whether these proposed amendments are consistent with the master plan?
Sure. So as Council mentioned, and just by way of quick background, the developer has really tried in good faith to carry out the stated purposes and goals of the redevelopment plan in its current form. Importantly, as Council mentioned, we revert back to the NC zone, which is in the land development ordinance, not the redevelopment plan. There's no provisions for affordable housing, no requirements for that in that base zoning. So really here, we're asking the board essentially to amend the application, really to be, I would say, consistent with other initiatives that we see throughout the city, as well as in the redevelopment plan itself. Here, again, we're looking at a height bonus that does apply to a portion of the block. But in order to achieve that, you would have to develop the entire block as one development. Here, as was stated, that we did have some difficulty in achieving that. There is also a citywide affordable housing overlay that I'm aware of, that based on my knowledge, it does not impose a density requirement. It's really self-limiting in terms of density. It reverts you to the bulk requirements, and you are able to get affordable housing by way of that. So here, similarly, we are proposing something that will be self-limiting in that regard. We have all of these bulk requirements, and if we are able to satisfy that and get affordable housing, I think we really meet the intent of the redevelopment plan. So we are in the mixed-use district of the Bait Street redevelopment plan. Since the developer could not acquire the rest of the block, as was stated, we are, we were mandated to look at the NC zone. Essentially, here, we're looking at what we're calling the affordable housing bonus that would apply to the mixed-use zone. So really, what I did was I looked at, obviously, the redevelopment plan. I looked at some other provisions in the zoning ordinance, like I mentioned, as well as the surrounding neighborhood, and tried to look at and see how appropriate these amendments would be. When we look at the redevelopment plan itself, we do see, obviously, mixed use being encouraged here, reduced parking, minimizing onsite parking. And we do see that height bonus that would allow you to go up to 12 stories on a portion of this block. And we've, we've already covered why that was unfeasible. So it's not totally out of left field, I would say. It is sort of anticipated on this specific block in the redevelopment plan. When we look at the master plan, we do have a whole slew of goals and objectives here. The master plan talks about rising home prices, the expansion of the rail system, and increase in ridership, providing and encouraging for flexibility in transportation options, lessening reliance on the automobile, preserving, creating a diversity of housing options, serving the full range of city residents. Of course, affordable housing, I would say, satisfies that. And I think when we talk about the benefits of affordable housing in a mixed-use zone, here, we're talking about residents that may not have the capability of getting around, as well as people that would be in market rate units. So in a mixed-use district, we have retail mixed with residential to meet the daily needs of these residents, to get away from the dependency on the automobile, like I stated, and providing a walkable neighborhood for these types of residents to, to enjoy and take advantage of. So really, all said, I think the amendments that we're looking at this evening are appropriate. They make sense, given the context of the, the citywide initiatives via the master plan, the zoning ordinance, and the redevelopment plan itself. So I think it really makes sense, and I think approval would be warranted. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to, to answer them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Flynn. Anybody? Any questions?
No.
No.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Council, anything else?
No, that, that completes our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here from public that wants to comment?
Mr. Chair, saying no public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Tanya, you're handling this?
Um, just put it up, just so I can have a reference. Okay, so there's three districts in this plan. One is the commercial automotive. If you're aware of the area, you know that there's already a lot of automotive uses that are there. So that is still, that's not changing. We have an open space area and the mixed-use district. So what we're really doing today, I have the bonus map, the bonus height map up, and I will go through that in one second. But for whatever reason, I'm not able to pull up the amendment, so I'm going to kind of be working back and forth. The first thing that we did is the minimum lot size for the mixed-use district was 20,000. And if you didn't have 20,000 square feet, you're required to do the NC zoning, and that was it. So you couldn't utilize, you couldn't access the other bonuses, the height bonuses, to get you up to the 10 stories or 12 stories. So we lowered that. That's the first thing that I did. The second thing that we did was, so nothing changes in sense of the minimum maximum height without any kind of bonuses, which is four stories, 45 feet. You can, it's 60 units an acre, that's the permitted density. So you guys have been doing this for a long time, and you know that 60 units an acre is still pretty, it's, that's, that's not a lot is still pretty, that's not a lot of units in a four-story building, especially within Jersey City. So the first level of bonuses is to go from the 60 to 90 units an acre, and you pay into the open space plan to go from 60 to 90. What we did is we changed the number that was originally 5,500 to 15,000 per unit. So we raised the unit cost for that first level of bonuses. The second level of bonuses is just a height bonus, right? It's to say that if you're in one of these areas, A, B, or C, you're able to get additional height with a, I wish, I really kind of wish that I was able to pull this up, with setbacks, right? So if you're, for example, if you're a C, which is the, gonna be the highest, you can get 10 stories, but then your two stories additional have to be set back five feet. So it's not, you're not looking at a 10-story block. We didn't really change any of that. But remember, that 90 units is still, that doesn't change. So you can still get a 10-story or 12-story building if you're in bonus height area C, but you're still looking at 90 units an acre. And that's where the affordable housing bonus really kicks in. So you're able to get the 12 stories, which is the maximum height that's permitted in the plan regardless, but we've made it across the board, we've just kind of leveled the playing field, and said that you can fill in the box as much as you want, as much as the density allows, as much as the building envelope allows, for the 10% affordable requirement. So that's essentially what's happening for this plan. I think this plan can be very detailed, and you can kind of get lost in the sauce of all of the kind of zoning. So I would say, if anything, this bonus kind of levels the playing field, we're looking at a 12-story zone with 10% affordable housing. And yes, this is the result of years of community meetings with the councilperson, and the councilperson, and I will not speak for him, he will speak for himself at the council, conversation that he had with myself and Matt, was that he was fine with the maximum stories and no limit on density. So that's kind of where we landed, that's what's before you today. Some of the things that I didn't mention, I'm just gonna kind of mention right now. We did change the maximum parking, the maximum, the minimum parking requirement is one per unit. We changed it to .3 for bedroom, which I'm assuming you're all familiar with now, because that's pretty much what we've been saying for the last few years, especially with our master plan. So that, we just cleaned that up. We cleaned up a couple of things in here regarding language that has been in a lot of redevelopment plans, like threshold, site plan thresholds, et cetera. And of course, because if you're going to utilize this bonus, we want you designated, and we want you working with the Division of Affordable Housing. So all of this is in the document online. I'm sorry, I'm not pulling, able to pull it up right here. I hope this map kind of gives you an idea of at least where we're talking about and what we're talking about. And that is pretty much any of it. I'm happy to answer any questions, of course.
If I, just to clarify something, so everybody's on the same page too, with the parking requirement. My understanding, it's the, and the document says it's .3 per bedroom for the underlying zoning. If you elect to use the affordable housing bonus, similar to the affordable housing overlay, the parking requirement goes away.
Okay, good, thank you. You answered my question already. I thought I saw that in there. Okay, any questions? Anybody? Anybody?
No.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment?
We're already closed, public.
Did we close, public? Oh my God. Oh my God. Oh my God. Oh my God. That's how we do it. So we have Tanya's recommendation?
Yes.
Thanks, I'm back. So entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two five dash zero zero two seven, review and discussion of amendments to the Bates Street redevelopment regarding the provision of an affordable housing bonus, and for, send it over to City Council, formal adoption with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Wick.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I believe it does comply with the master plan, and my vote is aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Do we have Mr. Higgins here still? There he is. We do want to call one application up real quick. Counsel, I was told five minutes we could get this done in?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'd love to hear that. So let's call item 18, is case P two zero two five dash zero zero two eight, is a minor subdivision for 10 Brinkerhoff Street.
Yes, good evening again, everyone. Michael Higgins, on behalf of the applicant. This is a minor subdivision, 10 Brinkerhoff and 71 Crescent Avenue. Some discrepancies were discovered in the meets and bounds description, so to correct various encroachments on the property and make the boundary line accurate, the property owner of 10 Brinkerhoff, working with the adjacent neighbor, are bringing in the subdivision. There's no variances at all as part of this application. So with that, I'll, I do have one witness, it's our surveyor, David Von Steenberg, if he could be sworn in. And counsel, I do have the original notices.
Chairman, see the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the minor subdivision being presented to the board. Does appear to be in order, we're gonna mark it as A1 for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel.
I do. David Von Steenberg, V O N, capital, excuse me, capital S T E E N B U R G.
Good evening, sir. I don't believe we've heard from you yet. Okay, if you could just go through your background real quick for us and your licensing?
Licensed land surveyor, licensed in New Jersey and New York. I've been licensed in New Jersey since 1989, and I guess that's it.
Okay, and that license is current and in good standing tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified, sir.
So this, like Matt explained, simple minor subdivision to clear up a little encroachment issue, and everything's conforming.
And David, could you just identify the area, maybe with your mouse for the board, just to see what we're talking about?
Yeah, let me just zoom this a little bit. So the area, it's the area right in here. It's being shifted over 1.73 feet, and then tapering down to the original property line.
Okay, and what part of is being shifted?
So the line that says 41.68 feet, and then continuing on a curve of 1669, that's being shifted over, I'm sorry, oops, sorry.
It's okay.
So that's being shifted over to the southeast.
Okay, understood. All right, any questions? Anyone?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins, anything else?
That concludes our presentation.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
Saying no public, I move to close.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, you're handling this for Jen Ru?
Yeah, she's out today. I reviewed the documents, I reviewed the staff memo, it's a fairly straightforward application. In the memo, we just recommend four conditions, staff recommends approval.
Okay, and counsel, you're okay with those conditions?
Yes, we are.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero two five dash zero zero two eight, as presented to our board here tonight.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Wick.
Aye.
Commissioner Stomato.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Given that staff is recommending it, and that you got it in under five minutes, my vote aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to item 12. Counsel, you want to call both items together?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna call item 12 and 13. Item 12 is case P two zero two four dash zero two two nine. It's the review and discussion of the master plan amendment with Cave and Point redevelopment plan. And item 13 is case P two zero two four dash zero one eight two. It's a preliminary and final major site plan and interim use for 200 chapalab. This was carried from the August 26 meeting with preservation of notice.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say a few words in reference to this.
Sure.
As a past president of Condo One Association, Port Liberté, and also on the, being on the HOA board as a representative at one point, I think it would be best for me to recuse myself from this, also under the advice of the, of our attorney. I want to be completely open to the public, that I, it's not for any other reason, except that if there was ever a lawsuit, it could be brought against the board because of my presence on this. So at this point, I'm gonna recuse myself on this.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Stomato. Okay, go ahead, counsel. Maybe we should wait until Pat leaves the dais before we start speaking.
Before I go on the record, we have this set up, but it's not showing up on the screen. Oh, it is. Okay.
Okay, go ahead, counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and board members, staff, and counsel. James McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant, in both cases, P two zero twenty four zero one eight two and P two zero two four zero two two nine. I thought it was appropriate to call both of those cases because this is actually the third time that we're here. The first time we were here was on May 27th of 2025, and at that point, we did call both cases. I tendered affidavits of publication and service at that point in time for both of those two cases, and counsel, you reviewed them. They were marked as exhibit A dash one, that's both of the affidavits were marked A dash And at that point, you determined that they were in order, counsel. We did start testimony, and we introduced a series of exhibits for the purpose of testimony. There were three sheets, and they were marked A dash two. We ran out of time. The case was then carried to the July 15th Planning Board hearing with preservation of notice. We started up again on July 15th. There was a challenge by HOA counsel, who is here tonight, who I'll introduce and let go on the record in a minute, but there was a challenge to the notice, the notices at that point. Counsel, you took that under advisement. You again determined the notices for both cases were in order. We ran out of time again on July 15th, and the cases were carried to August 26th. We came back on August 26th, however, on the eve of August 26th, HOA counsel had retained some experts on behalf of the Port Liberté Homeowners Association. They served the applicant with some reports, and we thought it was best to take the reports under advisement. So we asked the case to be carried again with preservation of notice to tonight. So that's how we got here. At this point, I'm just gonna let the Port Liberté Homeowners Association counsel introduce himself and go on the record, if that's okay with the chairman and counsel.
Sure, of course.
Good evening, everybody. Martin Cabalar from Becker, New York, PC, on behalf of Port Liberté Homeowners Association Inc., who is an objector to this application. Thank you for doing.
So tonight, I'm gonna start the presentation only with case 182, to avoid any confusion in the record, because we have two actually separate cases. One is an application for a preliminary and final site plan approval with an interim use approval. That's case 182. Case 229 is the conforming master plan amendment case. I'm gonna proceed with case 182 from start to finish at this point, if that's okay with you, counsel.
That is okay with me, however, I could be losing it. I had us as August 12th.
Is that what everybody else has? Oh, yes, yes, it was August 12th. I apologize. August 12th, sorry.
And you were not here on the 26th on this matter?
We were not here on the 26th.
Okay.
There's another date that's important on the 26th, which we'll get to in a second, but you're right, it was the 12th. I apologize.
All right, so we've got three dates?
May 27th, July 15th, and August 12th. In each case, the carries was with preservation of notice.
And I'm up to A3 was the last marking?
That, you, the next exhibit that's introduced would be A3. Yes.
Yeah, A2 is three slides.
Yes.
The engineering slides. What's on the screen we're gonna mark is A3?
So what's on the screen we're gonna mark is A3?
Counsel, counsel, one second. I don't want to interrupt your flow.
That's okay.
Before you start, I think it might be appropriate. Generally, any elected officials that come to speak on an application, we like to give them the courtesy. They're all very busy people, and we do have Commissioner O'Day here tonight. I'd like to get him in before you begin, just to give a statement. He's got other events to go to tonight, so obviously, we allow Commissioner O'Day that courtesy anytime he's here, so, Commissioner?
deference to the commissioner, of course.
Thank you.
And chairman, perhaps before we do that, we should just certify who's here and who's able to vote on the application this evening.
I have to bring up CAMs. It would be Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
I was not here on the 12th, but I read the transcript on August 12th.
And Commissioner Gangadin.
Yep.
Chair, I was also not here, but I read the transcript.
I just want to get, that would be everyone. So I was not present on the 15th, the July 15th meeting, but I have reviewed the video for that. Anybody else? Is that it?
I was here on the 12th and the 26th, and I'm here tonight.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, first, I want to thank you for extending that courtesy to me. I appreciate that. I'll try to be very brief. I just want to go on record and express some concerns. I've met with residents from Port Liberté. I've had the opportunity to review some of their documents, and some of the concerns of the reports they submitted about the effect and impact that this project may have on the adjoining property, issues with stormwater, issues with potential flooding, and obviously, those issues are critical and need to be addressed. Additionally, I have concerns over the redevelopment agreements that were originally enacted and executed many, many years ago for what was then gonna be five phases of Port Liberté, and the requirements within those agreements of the requirement of contributions for maintenance of things like the road that's shared by all the phases, and also the walkway that benefits all the various phases of it. So I've made some inquiries to the, to the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency, who acknowledged that those existed. They have yet to provide any clear evidence or proof that currently they would be imposed on, on this phase proportionate to the way that they would and should have been, based on what was done literally back in the 80s. Believe it or not, I was a councilman back in the 80s. So I remember this from, 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 from a number of perspectives, but obviously, working with the community, addressing the community concerns is critical, and I I would ask that before you proceed and move forward with this, all those issues of the community are not only are given a fair hearing, but you're sure that are addressed 'cause to move forward with the development of it. Without doing that would have a severe adverse impact of the remaining, um, areas of Port Liberté that have already been developed, that are already paying taxes and that are already having to pay for those costs and to incur additional potential costs based on what this development may do to their site is something that I think would be unfair and unreasonable. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So we'll obviously take testimony, but we'll get into all the commissioner's questions, whether it's tonight or at another hearing. I hope it's tonight. Mr. McCann, do you think we're gonna?
I don't know, some of it's beyond my control.
Okay.
A lot of this is probably beyond my control tonight.
Okay, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, so, um, on case 182, we are here. In connection with, um, block 27503, lot 15 on the tax map, also known as 200 Chapel Avenue. It's a nine acre site. It's in the Cave and Point redevelopment plan, and the project we're gonna present to you tonight is a 168-unit stacked townhome-style condominium situated in 19 four-story buildings. Each unit will have two parking spaces, one in a garage, one on a driveway, uh, and the development will have 80 guest parking spaces and a total of 416 spaces with open space amenities. Uh, as I mentioned before, the relief requested is a preliminary and final site plan approval with an interim use approval. For a sales trailer. The redevelopment plan limits it to three years, um, with the possibility of extensions for interim uses, so we're asking for a three-year approval, which would commence when the sales trailer gets a permit for occupancy. My first witness tonight is, uh, Mr. Brian Waisner, who is, uh, the civil engineer for the project. He's here and ready to go, so I think unless the board has any other questions, we can, we can start testimony and swear him in.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
I do. My name is Brian, B R Y A N, Waisner, W A I S N O R.
Good evening, Mr. Waisner. Your license is current tonight in New Jersey?
It is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you.
So the first thing that I'd like to do is, for housekeeping purposes, um, Mr. Waisner, the plans that we are requesting that the board approve tonight are 37 sheets prepared by your office, starting with CS 001, which is the cover sheet with the zoning chart and ending on CS 503, construction detail plan. And all of those sheets are dated August 26th, 2025. Is that correct?
Dated or last revised?
Last revised.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Those are the civil plans that we are requesting approval of tonight. Um, and, Mr. Waisner, your office has prepared a digital slide presentation for tonight's meeting, correct?
That's correct.
And that's up on the screen, is that correct?
Yes, it's four, four slides.
Okay, and would you just take a look? I brought a hard copy just to be a little bit careful. Would you just take a look at that and make sure it's the same thing? And then counsel, I mean, of course, we mark that as A3.
So A3 is going to be whatever exhibit he's looking at, which is slideshow?
That's correct. That's a printout of our slideshow.
We are not marking the revised plans that were uploaded to the portal?
We don't have them with us because they're too voluminous, but we could mark them as A3 if it please counsel and the board. And then mark this as A4.
Yeah. For purpose of the record, let's do that because I don't know if, when the revised plans go on the portal, if they replace the prior set with a revision date. So for purposes of the record, I wanna mark A3 as the Langin Civil Plan with a date of August 26th.
Right, last revised, August 26th.
I thought I heard that perhaps there's a sheet in there with a date of August 26th, not a revision date of August 26th.
No, they're all revised, they're last revised, all dated, all dated, last revised, August 26th.
One second, let me, let me just verify that.
Sure, you can check.
That's correct. They're all last revised, August 26th.
Twenty-seven sheets, you said?
Thirty-seven.
And then A4 is going to be the four-sheet slideshow. Do we have a title and a date on it?
There, each sheet is labeled differently. They're all dated today.
They're all dated September 9th, 2025. Each sheet has a different name. The first sheet is Liberty Watch Existing Conditions. The second sheet is Liberty Watch Plan Rendering. Third sheet is Liberty Watch Parking Landscape Ratio Exhibit. Fourth sheet and final sheet is Liberty Watch Sales Office Plan.
I, I unplugged it. It's, it's gone blank on me. One second.
All right, so counsel, this is what we're gonna do. A4, lowercase a, will be Existing Condition. A4 lowercase b, Plan Rendering. A4 lowercase c, the Parking Ratio, and A4 lowercase d, the Sales Office Plan, for purposes of the record.
That's fine, I was just notified that the land, the Sales Office Plan is actually dated last revised August 26th.
And the record will so reflect.
I'm gonna tender those to-
I'll take hard copies always. I'm gonna mark them.
I got it.
And counsel, before, uh, sorry, but before we continue, uh, Councilman Solomon, I'll obviously extend the courtesy if you wanna get a record on state, or a, a statement on record.
Yes, can you give me one minute?
Okay, not a problem. I assumed you wrote it before you got here. Okay, whenever, uh, whenever you're ready, just yell.
So I could do one more piece of housekeeping while-
Okay, that's fine.
So, um, Brian, can you, um, Mr. Waisner, can you tell us which redevelopment plan this property is in?
This property is in the Cave and Point redevelopment plan.
I'm gonna show you this document and ask you to identify it.
This is the Cave and Point redevelopment plan.
Tell us the last date on it.
Signage threshold updates amended October 13th, 2022.
This is the redevelopment plan that we're proceeding under tonight. I, I would like to just mark it just to be extra careful as exhibit A dash four. Five, sorry.
We're up to A5. Planning staff is that accurate, that this is the most current version of the redevelopment plan?
Yeah, it was last amended October 13th, 2022.
Okay, so counsel, as A5, we are going to mark the Cavan, uh, sorry, Cave and Point redevelopment plan. Last revised. Just give me the date again, please. Give me the last revision date again, please.
Uh, October 13th, 2000, uh, 2022.
Okay. I'm gonna look at the digital version, not that I don't trust you. Any other housekeeping, counsel?
Uh, that was it.
Okay.
So counsel, before we start, let's get, uh, Councilman Solomon up.
Thank you, Chairman, for the courtesy. Apologies for the quick delay. I will try to be brief and thank all of you for your service to our city. Um, so I just have a quick statement about, um, the application before you, and I did, you know, wanna suppose focus on a specific point, you know, with the two hats, right? Obviously, individual citizen in the city of Jersey City and then as a council member. And so with the council member hat on, the one thing I specifically wanted to flag that's before you today is the issue of an expired redevelopment plan, and that has come before the council. And so I just wanted to offer my specific thoughts on this. Uh, back in November of 2020, um, uh, it was brought before the council the idea of eliminating all expiration dates in redevelopment plans. At the time, both myself and, uh, the majority of the governing body objected to that idea, and it was never passed. And my argument at the time was that if an expiration date was written into a plan, I mean, we don't write in expiration dates that are five years, we write them in over decades, that, uh, the world changes in 30 and 40 years. And the expiration date properly serves as a, um, kind of leverage point to force the governing body and the city to reassess zoning after multiple decades, after the world changes so much in that time. And so I thought the expiration dates made sense in plans to force us to reconsider our zoning and our redevelopment plans over the course of many years, and that since that time, a couple of plans have come before us, and we have removed the expiration dates, but those were on a plan-specific basis because we had looked at the zoning again. Our planning staff and the governing body had done that. I think that is the appropriate way to handle it. I know that state law is unclear, but I wanted to make sure you all knew, as a member of the governing body, that we were given the opportunity to remove all the expiration dates and chose not to back in November of 2020. And then just taking off that hat and talking just as a citizen, um, I think I wanna just sort of express my concerns with some of the proposals before you, um, and in particular, some of the concerns are about the broader maintenance of the waterfront walkway and how that's going to be considered, um, some of the flexibility, I think, within the redevelopment plan, and whether they've appropriately considered some of the concerns of the existing residents of Port Liberté. And I don't wanna take too much of your time, and I thank you all so much and appreciate the courtesy. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Have a good night, and, uh, counsel, obviously, will take testimony as well with, uh, Councilman Solomon's comments and address them as the meeting goes on.
Okay.
And I don't see any other mayoral candidates at the door right now, so I, we'll see, we'll see if any more show up.
Well, there's three more, so I guess, uh, it's possible.
But, Mike, we probably should get a break in now before we get into testimony and cross-exam, you think? Okay, counsel, if that's okay, we're gonna take five before we get into testimony?
Why not?
Rather than break in the middle of it, okay? All right, we'll be back in, uh, five to 10 minutes, everybody. All right, could we come to order again, everybody, please? Counsel, the floor is yours finally.
Uh, Mr. Waisner, um, just before you start your presentation, just two questions. As the civil engineer for the project, you have reviewed the Cave and Point redevelopment plan, um, and its requirements, correct?
I have.
And you've also reviewed the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance and its requirements, correct?
I have.
Okay. Take it away. Uh, I think describing the existing site conditions would be where you wanna start, correct?
That would be correct.
All right.
So this is the first, uh, slide in the four-slide deck of, um, exhibit A4. Um, it's titled Existing Conditions, dated September 9th. North is oriented to the left side of your screen. Chapel Ave is on the bottom of the screen, and the site is located at 200 Chapel Ave in the Port Liberté section of Jersey City. The site is block 27503, lot 15. It's 9.5 acres, plus or minus. It's surrounded by Chapel Avenue to the west, Liberty National Golf Course to the north and to the east. Uh, and to the south is the Port Liberté Residential, uh, development, and in particular, uh, the nearest roads of that development, which are private roads, are Aurora Place, Enterprise Court, and Constellation, uh, Place. The site's currently vacant. Uh, it was most recently used as a construction staging area for the adjacent residential project called The Oliver, which is just south, uh, of this site and south of Freedom Way. Uh, on the site today, there's an existing, uh, JCMUA pump house. I'm gonna move my mouse to circle it very quickly, uh, down near Chapel Avenue. There's also a trash area that the adjacent residential community uses to store their trash after it's picked up at their homes, uh, before it's hauled away. Um, and there's an agreement in place for both of those to be located there. There's also a temporary dog run on the eastern side of the site that's being used by the Port Liberté residents. The site's relatively flat, uh, with grades ranging from elevation eight to 12 throughout the site, and I'm referring to NAVD 88 as the datum elevation. The site is located in the tidal floodplain, tidal floodplain of the Hudson River, which is elevation 12. And any development of the site will require the site to be raised above elevation 12 for new structures and roads. I'd like to, uh, move to page two of the slide deck, which is titled Plan Rendering, also dated September 9th. Uh, north is to the left, same orientation as the existing, uh, conditions figure. So again, the site is in the Cave and Point redevelopment plan, which permits townhome uses. Um, this layout conforms, uh, to the allowed uses and the bulk standards of that plan. Uh, the site is part of the Port Liberté Master Plan, which was most recently amended in May of 2022. That plan assumed this site would have 512 units, dwelling units on it, in various buildings, up to 15 stories high. This project proposes 168 townhomes in four-story buildings, 19 buildings on-site. Each building is four stories and will contain between four and 16 units. Access to the site will be by a driveway off of Chapel Avenue. Um, the frontage along Chapel Avenue is fairly narrow. It's also constrained by the existing JCMUA pump station building, which will remain. It's this white box that I'm moving my mouse around at the moment. Um, and this driveway will be in and out, full, uh, movement and stop controlled. It's slightly angled to the north, which is where the majority of the traffic will come. It also maximizes the distance between the existing Freedom Way driveway, uh, that serves the adjacent communities. We did talk to, uh, Jersey City Transportation Group about this driveway, um, and after walking through the constraints and the angle and the rationale, they understand this is more or less the best we can do with this kinda driveway and this kinda site. The layout was carefully, uh, considered, given the unique shape of the site and the surrounding uses. The townhomes are laid out such that their fronts, their front door, the more attractive side, are actually facing the residential community to the south, the golf course to the north and, to a lesser degree, to the west and east, but also, uh- the north, and to a lesser degree, to the west and east, but also towards Chapel Avenue. The road and the parking that you see on this plan are all internal to the site that would be between the buildings themselves, or like an internal alleyway, an internal parking, where that would be more internal to the site, whereas the more aesthetically pleasing faces of the buildings would be facing outward. Parking will have two spaces per unit, one driveway space and one garage space. So that's three hundred and thirty-six spaces dedicated to the units. There'll also be eighty guest parking spaces that are sprinkled throughout the community. And that will allow for visitors to park on-site, not have to use Chapel Avenue when, when guests and visitors arrive and want to visit people at this community. That means the total parking for this will be four hundred and sixteen spaces, which is roughly two and a half spaces per unit. Of those eighty guest parking spaces, the plan proposes the required number of EV parking spaces, twelve, the required number of ADA compliance spaces, four, and again, they're spread throughout the community. The drive aisles are twenty-two feet wide behind the driveway spaces, and they're twenty-four feet wide behind any guest spaces. The driveway spaces are actually an extra two feet long. They're twenty feet deep, whereas the guest spaces are only eighteen feet deep. So it amounts to the same amount of room, whether they're twenty-two or twenty-four, for parking and for circulating. There was discussion with the transportation group about the circulation on-site. One of the suggestions they had that we adopted, and you see on this plan, is in the middle of the site, where there's two buildings, buildings, goodness, gonna test my eyes here.
Mr. Weisner, when you say the transportation group, you mean the Jersey City Department of Infrastructure, this, one of the consultants of the planning board, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
They suggested we consider making the traffic around this center courtyard area that I'm moving my mouse around, a one-way loop, which we've done. They suggested we narrow the area in front of the playground to a single eighteen-foot-wide lane, because it would slow and calm traffic in front of a tatla. So we've done that as well. But we keep the same twenty-two or twenty-four-foot dimension, depending on whether behind a driveway or a parking stall, even though it's one-way, for extra maneuverability. There will be one emergency driveway located on the western side of the site that lines up with Aurora Place. The driveway will be out of grass pavers, so it'll look like a lawn area. It does slope down to Aurora Place. There'll be a gate on it. The fire department and emergency department will have access to the key to that gate, but otherwise it will remain closed, not for everyday use. In terms of amenities and other site features, the site has a network of sidewalks that runs throughout it. One of the other suggestions or requests of the Department of Infrastructure Transportation Group was to add a crosswalk at Chapel Avenue on the north side of our driveway, which bookends a crosswalk that was installed by the residential development called the Oliver on the south side. And also to add a second sidewalk running into the site, so there's sidewalks on both sides of the entry drive. So we've accommodated that request. And then those sidewalks link around to all the buildings, all the front doors obviously have a sidewalk and a connection. And there's also several amenities. There's quieter sitting areas, some benches to sit out, there's a dog park, a flowering garden, a larger area with some picnic table and chaise lounges. This is for the residents of this community. It's a self-contained community. It's not intended to share amenities with other communities. There will be a four-foot-high decorative black aluminum fence along the southern property line that borders the adjacent residential. The four-foot-high, I think, makes for a nice look, as opposed to, say, the six-foot-high that already exists around the golf course and will remain. There will still be a trash area in the front of the site that will also be fenced in. And that trash area, again, is for the adjacent residential community. They have their trash collected. It's brought over and stored before it's hauled away. That's how it will remain today. The difference is we've reoriented it to make the circulation getting in, out, and picking up the trash a little more efficient. We've also got it fully gated off. It will share the driveway with this community, but it's not going to be a frequent operation. It's not like the residents are driving their trash there and dropping it off every day multiple times a day. The trash for the actual one hundred and sixty-eight townhomes that are part of this project, their trash will be stored in their garages and brought out to the end of their driveway for trash pickup, as you do in other parts of the city. It's completely separate from this trash area that's being proposed in the front of the site. In terms of landscaping, might be a little hard to see, but there is a robust landscaping plan that's illustrated here. There's over a hundred and eighty trees, shade trees, ornamental trees, evergreens. There's nineteen hundred shrubs, approximately nineteen hundred shrubs, as well as perennials and grasses spaced throughout. There'll be new lighting, which will be LED, and they'll match the fixtures that already exist in the other communities in Port Liberté. There's a, the poles that are there that will serve the parking areas are fourteen-foot-high. But there are also bollard lights along the sidewalk, which provides a softer lighting and pedestrian safety that you don't need to get with a tall pole. The minimum illumination requirements for the parking lot and sidewalk have been met by this lighting plan. One of the requests from the adjacent community was, could the light pole that lights that emergency access be reoriented or shifted to reduce the light? We did change the fixture in that light to reduce it, but we really don't want to completely remove it, because if there is an emergency, you want that area lit. In terms of utilities, the existing JCMUA pump house is going to remain. There'll be all-new utilities, sanitary, water, storm, electric, gas, put in for the new townhomes. There's also a couple of water and sanitary lines that run through the property from the existing residential community. Those will be replaced and/or upgraded to be brand-new. Obviously, they have to be put in new and serviceable before the old ones are taken out. There's not going to be a shut-off of service for this project. So I'll just spend one, a couple of minutes talking about grading and stormwater. So as I mentioned, the, the project site is located in the tidal floodplain of the Hudson River, elevation twelve. The majority of the site today falls in that flood hazard area, meaning it's below elevation twelve. As a requirement of DEP, the proposed design for new structures and roadways, you need to raise the project at least a foot, to the extent possible, above that flood elevation. So flood elevation twelve, you gotta put your buildings and roads to the extent you can above thirteen. That's the DEP flood rules for tidal floodplain, and that's what this project proposes. This is for conformance with the DEP flood hazard rules and regulations, and we went to the DEP, and we have a permit from them that confirms that's how we meet the regulations. Unlike other flood hazard areas, which are driven by runoff, heavy rain, which are called fluvial floodplains, a tidal floodplain does not require you to offset the amount of area that you're filling in. Be like filling in the ocean. No amount of filling in the ocean of a project like this or any size is going to offset how much tidal flood comes in. So the DEP reviewed this design, and in March, we received a flood hazard permit, which indicates conformance with NJ AC seven colon eight. They agreed that no water quantity management, no detention basins or infiltration needs to be provided on this site, because, again, it's located in a tidal floodplain. There's nothing you can do about the ocean coming in. They did require us to provide water quality enhancement, which we've done. The water today makes it to the wet ponds. There's three or four different wet ponds on the golf course. There's three that this project will tie into by pipes that run underneath the golf course and underneath Chapel Avenue. And although those ponds were designed and intended to be water quality improvements, the regulations under which those water quality improvements have changed, and so now we need to do more enhanced water quality, and we are complying with that. So we're putting in eleven green infrastructure manufactured treatment devices scattered throughout the site to collect runoff and treat it before it leaves the site. We've also considered how the raising of the site will affect the surrounding area. And by that, I mean, we're cognizant that we just can't raise our site and let whatever flows off the edge, off the edge into the adjacent community. So we have a series, which are shown on the, the grading and drainage plan, a series of inlets along the southern side in particular, as well as along the northern side by the golf course, that collect the runoff before it will run off the site and flow into an adjacent property. Those are collected in inlets and piped to one of the three outfalls that goes to the wet pond, which go to the Hudson River. The conveyance system, that inlet and pipes have been designed for the twenty-five-year storm event. This is a, one of the two common industry standards, ten-year and twenty-five-year storm event. This is, again, different, how you design your pipes, from what the DEP requires in terms of how you overall manage your stormwater from a floodplain. Two different things. So this was a twenty-five-year design storm, and the adjacent residential community had expressed their concern, so we went back and re-looked at that design. They also asked what would happen under more extreme events, like, say, the hundred-year storm. And even though you don't design a pipe system for the hundred-year storm in ordinary times, we went back and looked and said, well, let's, what happens if the hundred-year storm were to come and run through that? And we looked, and low and behold, we found that, if anything, there'd be a little bit of water ponding on this Liberty Watch project site. It would not pond or go out of the inlets that are closest to the residential neighborhood. So that's an analysis that we wouldn't ordinarily do. It's a little above and beyond, but because we were able to do it. And by the way, in order to make that happen, we also enhanced the design. We increased the size of a few pipes, just to make sure that we could keep it as low as possible. So as a enhancement, and a, not a quite direct request, but as a result of their request to look at it, we did upsize pipes to provide better stormwater management than might be obligated otherwise.
Before you go to the next part of your presentation, I want to show you a document. It's entitled State of New Jersey Department of Environmental, Environmental Protection Watershed and Land Management Permit. Is that the flood hazard permit that you referred to that you had obtained for the project?
It is.
And that, and your office applied for that?
Yes.
And so you're, when you discuss it, you're speaking firsthand about receiving that permit.
Yes, I'm familiar with what went into here and the conditions in here.
Like to mark, this says, our next, I think we're up to A six?
Now, counsel, I've got two questions. One, I didn't see that on the portal. Was it not uploaded to the portal?
Was not. Was not uploaded.
I was looking for it. Does counsel have a copy of it?
Counsel has a copy. I can tender it right now.
Okay. I will take a copy of it. So for purposes of the record, this is permit number zero-nine-zero-six dash two-four dash zero-zero-one-three-point-one-LUP-two-four-zero-zero-zero-one. It is a flood hazard area individual permit, flood hazard area verification, was approved March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, expires on March seventeenth, two thousand thirty. A six for purposes of the record.
All right. Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Weisner, you talked about stormwater. Let's talk a little bit about zoning compliance, if you would. Your firm prepared the zoning chart for the project, correct?
We did.
And you worked with a planner in your firm also, who participated in the zoning compliance and review component of designing this project, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Would you just run through some of the major terms of zoning compliance for us that affect the design that's before the board right now?
Sure. So in the Cave and Point Redevelopment Plan, Section eight A describes the principal allowed uses, and townhomes are a permitted use. This is a proposed townhome project. Section eight B lists the accessory uses, and parking is an accessory use that's permitted, and that's what this project proposes, so it's compliant. Section eight C one.
And does the number of parking spaces also comply with the redevelopment plan?
It does. The number of parking spaces is also covered by Section eight D. The minimum parking required is two spaces per unit.
Which we have, correct?
We have. Plus, we have the eighty parking spaces that are guest spaces, so in effect, it becomes two and a half spaces per unit when you average it out.
And there's no maximum?
There's no maximum number of spaces allowed or required or permitted. Section eight C one describes the density. The density is twenty-eight, twenty units per acre. It's across the entire redevelopment plan area, though, which is a hundred and twenty-one-point-nine acres.
Actually, it's the master plan area, correct?
Master plan area.
Okay.
This project will add one hundred and sixty-eight units to the twelve-hundred-and-six existing units, bringing the total number of units to thirteen-seventy-four, which is eleven-point-three units per acre. Maximum is twenty point, twenty units per acre. This is eleven-point-three. The master plan had a larger number, because they had five hundred and twelve units proposed, and that would have been fourteen-point-one units per acre. But again, this is one hundred and sixty-eight units. It reduces the number of units per acre. It's a less intense use of the property than the master plan envisioned. Section eight C two, they allow building coverage, again, within the master plan area is twenty-five percent. This project will bring the total building area, building coverage, to about fourteen-point-eight acres, which is twelve-point-one percent. Twenty-five percent allowed, twelve-point-one percent proposed. The approved master plan had envisioned thirteen-point-seven, so again, this is a less develop, a less intense use of the property than the master plan had envisioned. The building height is covered by Section eight C three. It's limited to fifteen stories and a two-hundred-foot-tall building. These units are going to be four stories and fifty-four feet, which is obviously compliant with fifteen stories and two-hundred feet. The master plan did contemplate three, seven, and fifteen-story buildings previously. So this is obviously much lower than a fifteen-story building. Section eight C five, the buildings must be set back sixty feet from Route one-eighty-five, which actually is this little dirt area on the bottom left of the screen. It's not an improved route. It's just a right-of-way that remains. So it must be set back at least sixty feet from there and twenty feet from Chapel Avenue. The buildings are set back over four-hundred feet from that right-of-way of Route one-eighty-five, and they're set back over seventy feet from Chapel Avenue, so compliant. We talked about parking. GAR, which addresses the sustainability of a project based on its landscaping and stormwater. The required ratio for this project is point-two-five, and the project achieves a point-three-seven. So again, it's greater than the minimum required. I believe one of the questions that was raised, just speaking of landscaping, I'm gonna flip to, if my computer will like it. There we go. Slide number three in the Exhibit A four. This is a parking landscape ratio exhibit. I think there was a question raised about the amount of landscaping in surface parking facilities, which sounds to me more like a shopping center surface parking than a residential community, but nonetheless, the area shown here in yellow is the guest parking area, as well as the driveways that lead to them or that would be used to get to them. And the green areas around that is the area, or within that, is the area that is landscaped or amenity space or. or amenity space or sidewalks that immediately abut or within that area. And that amounts to roughly 39%. So the green and yellow combined, the green is the landscape amenity area, that's 39% of that, which is greater than the 10%, which is the objective listed in the Cave-in Point Redevelopment Plan. Last item is the interim use, a temporary sales office. So I've flipped to the fourth slide in the slide deck. This is the sales office plan. This is a plan that was also submitted as part of our 37 drawing set, so it's a repeat. It's not a new graphic. And this shows the area of the site that's closest to Chapel Avenue, and it shows where a sales office would be located. And again, the purpose of this is to facilitate the sale of units. Having a temporary office onsite will make it a lot more convenient than an onsite location. This can be an interim use. It's permissible, subject to the review of the planning board under Section 6, provided there's no adverse impact on the surrounding uses. It amounts to basically a sales office trailer, about 1,444 square feet, which are a reception area, a couple of offices, and a couple of bathrooms. Obviously, there'll be temporary utilities to power all that. There's landscaping proposed around it, temporary landscaping, and parking out front. There'll also be temporary marketing signage for the development, some banners and directional signage. We think this is a positive benefit because it will indicate where prospective buyers or interested parties can go and find the site, as opposed to driving around the neighborhoods looking for where this might be. The idea would be that this would be up for up to three years after the building permit is pulled, or until the last sale of the last unit, whichever comes first. So the quicker they sell the units, the quicker this gets replaced.
Thank you. Review agents?
Sure. So we received review letters from the JCMUA, May 22nd, 2025, the Department of Infrastructure, Division of Transportation Planning, dated May 1, 2025.
Before you discuss that, is that a copy of the review agent comments that you just referred to?
It is.
Okay. That's a document from the Jersey City Department of Infrastructure, dated May 1st, 2025. I'm going to propose this as Exhibit A7, counsel. And this is posted on the portal, but just to be careful.
Counsel, let me just get it out there while we're doing this. A7 is dated May 1st, 2025. It is a Division of Transportation Planning review memo of the plan that was submitted, presumably prior to May 1st.
That's correct.
We have plans that were last revised 10 days or so ago.
Yes.
Have those been submitted to the Division of Transportation Planning? Have there been any communication with the people at the Division of Transportation and Planning with respect to those revisions?
So I'm going to give you a general answer, and then let Mr. Weisner give you a detailed answer. The general answer is the plans that we are requesting the board approve tonight, which I think we said were civil plans marked for identification as A-3.
Right.
Those plans addressed all of the comments in A7. And they have been posted on the portal, along with a cover letter from Mr. Weisner summarizing the revisions to the plan. However, there was not time to submit them to the Department of Infrastructure yet. But we have, we have addressed the comments in A7.
I will add, after receiving, after receiving that letter in May, before preparing these revised plans in August, we had a call to walk through the comments and make sure we understood what their intent was, what the clarifications might need to be, and how we would revise the plans. So we feel confident that we've addressed their comments in a way that they're expecting us to address their comments.
But not to mislead the board, the how we have addressed the comments have not yet been reviewed by the Department of Infrastructure, nor do they have to be prior to a hearing. They can still be dealt with during resolution compliance, which is standard procedure, just to be perfectly open with the board.
And is it your intention to mark as A8, the JCMUA May 22nd letter? I know it was just referenced by the witness for some reason.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're going to mark that as A8?
Yes.
All right. Let's go through that, please.
Mr. Weisner, can you take a look at this letter from the Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority?
That's correct.
That's the letter that we received as part of review agent comments from the MUA?
That's correct.
Dated May 22nd, 2025, correct?
That's correct.
Offered as A8.
Thank you, counsel. A8 is the May 22nd, 2025 JCMUA review letter, and counsel, I suspect the witness will testify similarly to A7 that those comments in A8 were addressed by the revised plans, but not yet submitted to and dealt with by the MUA.
Mr. Weisner?
That's correct.
Okay.
And likewise, we had a call with JCMUA staff to make sure we understood the comments and could satisfy them with a revised set of plans that they will have to review and confirm.
Now, I also saw in reviewing the file, the Director of Forestry had a comment about changing two of the species. Did you see that as well?
Mr. Weisner?
Yes. Yes, we did, and we addressed that in the August 26 resubmission. We have not submitted directly to the forestry to confirm that our revision meets their satisfaction, but we expect it will.
Do you have that, counsel? And do you want to mark that as A9 while we're doing this?
I have it.
We're going to get that. It wasn't an official report. I think it was an email, but we'll mark it.
I'm sorry, I don't have it.
Mr. Weisner, I'm going to show you a sheet of paper from the Director of Forestry. Ask you if that's the comment that you received in connection with the plans that are being presented to the board.
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
That was a Word document posted to the portal. That's how it came in its native form. I merely printed it for purposes of tonight's proceeding. We're going to mark it as A9. Again, it was uploaded to the portal on May 2nd of 2025. So if that comment was sent to you in an email, it was uploaded to the portal as a Word document. So that's the Director of Forestry uploaded on May 2nd, 2025.
And I think just to complete the housekeeping process, Mr. Weisner, is this a copy of the cover letter that we submitted to planning and posted on the portal, addressing all of the review agent comments that we have been discussing, MUA, Department of Infrastructure, and Forestry?
Yes, it's dated August 26th. My office prepared it. It lists all those comments and responses, point by point, to all those comments in
So the Langin, August 26, 2025, response letter, comment, response, broken down by memo, 10 pages.
I think there are 10 pages of text, and there's some attachments, just to be clear.
Correct. It's a 10-page narrative. Attachment A, hydrant flow test results.
I believe they are, yes.
Attachment B, water demand calculations.
This one, the latest one, was it A10?
Attachment C, sanitary sewer capacity calculations. On the portal currently, I have two PDFs. The letter does state that it's also enclosing two-sheet survey, 37-sheet site plan set, and a stormwater management report, last revised August 26, 2025, in addition to responding I have one titled Cover Letter to Sophia Delivering Responses 2. to each of the comments set forth in those review memos. Then I have Cover Letter, Liberty Watch Resubmission Letter, both uploaded on August 28th. But I am unable to open either one on the portal. It's reporting an error.
Cam, can you take a look at that? Because I'm not on that network. I'm on a hotspot on my phone that I always use, and I have access to. I don't trust public Wi-Fi.
So Commissioner Patel can open it on his. The cover letter to Sophia is a Connell Foley letter, signed by Mr. Lean, enclosing the various site plans and such, and specifically referencing what we've marked as A10 as the
Which one are you talking about, counsel? That you cannot open?
I cannot open either attachment. I had seen the response letter that we just marked as A10. I believe it was identified on the portal as Cover Letter, Liberty Watch Resubmission. And that should be a Langin document. And it is. So just for purposes of the record. So that A10, I can't open it digitally right now on this particular device, but on Mr. Patel's device, which is the same surface provided by the city. Of course, the one I get doesn't work. I don't vote.
Mr. Patel has the magic touch.
That's it.
Could be what it is.
It's back to Mr. McCann. We're up to A10. I don't know if Mr. McCann has other items that he wants marked or wants to discuss before.
Mr. Weisner, I have one more permit I'd like to ask you about.
Was it on the portal?
It is not. As the project engineer, did your firm file an application for a soil erosion and sediment control plan approval with the Hudson Essex Pasaic Soil Conservation District?
We did.
And in fact, did you receive an approval?
We did.
And is that, I just handed you a document. Is that a copy of the approval?
It is.
Can you describe it a little bit for us?
Sure. It's dated October 22nd, 2024. It's from the Hudson Essex Pasaic Soil Conservation District, and it is an indication that the district has completed its review of the soil erosion plan, and reports that the plan meets the standards for soil erosion, and the plan is certified by them. They also provide instructions for filing an online permit to start soil disturbance.
Which is the second page of that document, correct?
Third page.
Third page. Offer this document as A11.
A11 is the October 22nd, 2024 Hudson Essex Pasaic Soil Conservation District Soil Erosion and Sediment Control, signed by a Matthew Ward. It's a J. Ward, a Matthew J. Ward. Counsel, I do have the same question with respect to this permit, and in light of the revisions, does any action have to be taken with respect to the permit?
Mr. Weisner?
Not until construction's ready to begin.
I think the question is, because we revised the plans...
Sorry.
Do we need to amend that permit?
I guess we should amend it for the record, although substantially, none of the improvements that they have reviewed and approved have changed. But for avoidance of confusion, we would recommend an amendment.
Thank you, sir.
Third page.
Third page. Offer this document as A-11.
A-11 is the October 22, 2024 Hudson Essex Pasaic Soil Conservation District Soil Erosion and Sediment Control, signed by a Matthew Ward. It's a J. Ward, a Matthew J. Ward. A-11. Counsel, I do have the same question with respect to this permit, and in light of the revisions, does any action have to be taken with respect to the permit?
Mr. Weisner?
Not until construction's ready to begin.
I think, I think the question is, because we revised the plans.
Sorry.
Do we need to amend that permit?
I guess we, we should amend it for the record, although substantially, none of the improvements that they have reviewed and approved have changed. But for avoidance of confusion, we would recommend an amendment.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes the presentation. Open it up to questions from the board.
All right. Thank you, counsel. I have a few I just want to get out of the way. Let's start with the easy ones. Is there a gate at the driveway? Or is that open to the public?
There will not be a gate at the driveway.
Okay. Is this a public road, or is this a private road?
Private road.
Private road, okay. So how is it maintained? It's maintained by staff that is employed by the applicant?
So the plan for development for this project is, at first, as the sponsor of the development, or the developer, Pulte Homes, the applicant, would maintain all of the roadways within the property. Because it's planned to be a condo, what happens is, once all of the condo units are sold, or once a percentage of them are sold, the condominium board, which is also established by the applicant when it commences the community, the, the composition of the board changes from Pulte representatives to homeowners that own units in the project. I think the plan is that Pulte, or its management arm, will manage the project until such time it is legally required to turn control of the project over to the condominium association, at which time it would be responsible for maintaining the internal roadways and other infrastructure, landscaping, all common areas of the project itself.
Okay.
Most likely through a professional management company.
Okay, understood. The fencing around the property. So the witness described a four-foot fence running around the south side of the property. Now, there's a six-foot fence on the golf course, correct?
That's correct.
So the only fence that's being built by the applicant is the four-foot that goes all the way around, and I'm assuming ends at where your mouse is right now?
Correct. There's also going to be a fence around a dog park. And there's also going to be a fence around the trash area.
Okay. Now, the trash area is gated as well, or no?
There will be sliding gates on the trash area.
Okay.
Just to refresh the board's recollection, the trash area is being constructed pursuant to an easement agreement
Sure.
between the existing HOA community and the current owner of the property. Pulte Homes, the applicant, is subject to that easement. Therefore, when it develops the property, it will construct the trash area, upgrade and construct the trash area pursuant to that easement.
Okay, gotcha. The... Okay, let me switch gears and get into the...
Just one more thing.
Sure.
That easement is posted on the portal. And also, the emergency access area. There is also an easement of record that allows that emergency access area to be there and to connect to the existing community.
Okay.
And that easement is also posted on the portal.
So there's no other breaks in the fence? There's no sidewalks that connect to the neighboring associations at all? This is a completely self-contained fenced-in?
That's correct.
Property right now?
The sidewalks only connect to the sidewalks on Chapel Avenue.
Internal, and then to Chapel, okay. I want to switch gears and go towards the how runoff is maintained. So the inlets that are around the... Are they only on the southern border of the property?
No, there's inlets throughout the site.
All the way around the site, okay. Is that a retention type of system? Is stormwater retained in there and reduced at a lesser rate? Or is it just a...
It's a means to catch the water and direct it in a pipe where you want it to go.
Okay.
It's not meant to hold back the water from the ocean.
So I'm going more towards a storm, and I'm not an engineer, my terminology, I'm sure, is wrong here, but a stormwater retention device would be a larger pipe that the inlet would dump into. And then, you know, that lets the water into the, what were they, flood the ponds?
The wet ponds.
The wet ponds. So that would release the water to the wet ponds, but not in one continuous stream. It lessens the, the flow that's going, and it just, it times the flow out to a...
What you're describing is a retention or a detention basin?
Detention, yes.
And if your question is, do we have them on this site, the answer is no.
Okay.
We're not restricting the water from going to the wet ponds. We're not holding it back to time it differently.
Okay, good. That was my question. So the inlets around the perimeter of the site. What type of inlets are they? Is it a metal grate system? Is it, if we could just describe that for us?
Well, it's a combination of inlets. Different circumstances, you know, have larger inlets and smaller inlets. So some of the inlets will be a conventional concrete box with the metal grate on top. If it's along a driveway, like along Chapel Avenue, it'll have a curb piece on it.
Okay.
Other inlets, because they might only capture the area between somebody's front door and the sidewalk, will be a smaller yard-type inlet, like a plastic eight-inch or twelve-inch type inlet. So it varies depending on the location and how much water would go to it.
Okay, and those are all going to be maintained by the condo association, then? Any maintenance, any, you know, garbage collection to make sure it doesn't collect into these inlets?
That's correct.
That'll be all maintained and monitored by the condo association?
Privately owned and maintained, yes.
Now, counsel, only because I've got a room full of people, it's anticipated that this is going to be a condominium. Is there anything that requires this to be a condominium, or is it possible that this could be a rental project that would then have to be managed professionally by the developer of the project as a rental project, like any other rental project?
My understanding is that the applicant, Pulte Homes, is building this only as a condominium, and there is no chance it will be a rental project.
As long as Pulte builds it.
Sure.
But there's nothing that can prevent Pulte to get it approved and sell it, and that person make it a rental project, right? I just don't want anybody to walk out of here thinking that there's no way, if this is approved, it has to be condominiums, or if this is approved, it has to be rentals. That's not what this board does. We've had this discussion many times on many projects. But I know that you're saying Pulte intends to build them as condominiums, and I appreciate that, I believe that, but it doesn't necessarily have to be that way, and there's nothing that requires that unless I'm wrong. I just want to be as transparent as possible about that.
So, as do I. Pulte Homes is a designated redeveloper. They've been designated by the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency to develop the site. Their designation application submitted describes this project as a condominium. And the redevelopment agreement that they will sign will describe this project, and, and does describe it, because the agreement is already in place, not signed, but in place, as a 168-unit condominium project. So if Pulte Homes were to try to, were to market this project for sale, not sure how familiar you are with, the board is with redevelopment agreements, but a project under a redevelopment agreement cannot be sold without the consent of the J.C.R.A. So Pulte would have to get permission from the J.C.R.A. to change this project from a condominium to a rental project in order to sell it. And I'm not saying that that's not possible to do, because it probably is, but it's another step in the process that would have to be complied with.
All right, so that...
Not sure if that, how that plays for you either way, counsel, but it's, it's...
It's clear to me, and obviously, obviously, as a designated redeveloper, with the caveat that we're the redeveloper, we agree that we're developing this as condominiums. If whatever happened, and there was a reason that it wasn't going to be developed in that manner, you can't just unilaterally do that. You have to go through the J.C.R.A. and the process. Same thing with if, for whatever reason, as a designated redeveloper, you wanted to...
Change the project.
Change the project, sell the project. You can't just unilaterally go do those things.
You cannot do it without the consent, the formal consent of the J.C.R.A.
Good. Okay. Any other questions, anyone? Yeah, go ahead, Doc.
So, Mr. Weisner, Chapel Ave. is the only entrance and exit to this place, right?
It's the only road to the area, yes.
I'm looking at the traffic impact study that was, I think, submitted September 5th. There's a couple of things that I just want to talk to you. Maybe you said it, and I'm sorry if I missed it. On the existing traffic counts, it says, "We note that local schools were not in session at the time of the counts." It's also unclear if any of the athletic fields proximate to the intersection were in use at the time of the counts.
Counsel, do you know what the commissioner is reading from?
I do. He's, he's not reading the applicant's traffic report. He's reading a traffic report that's been submitted by HOA council.
That's all I have here.
Which is not of record yet.
The Bright View Engineering.
Correct.
September 5th. So
So...
I just wanted to make sure that you and the witness knew what the commissioner was reading. I suspect you knew. I knew as soon as I heard it, obviously. Do you want to address any of the things that we just glossed over with respect to what counsel is going to start bringing up in about an hour when he gets his shot, or...
So Mr. Weisner has a colleague who is a traffic expert, who is actually the traffic person for this project, who actually did a traffic study. And I think that I can leave it up to the board. I can have the traffic expert testify directly, or we can hear from HOA council regarding the report, Commissioner Gonzalez, that you referenced, and then I can bring up my traffic expert to answer any questions regarding that report. I wasn't planning on putting my traffic person, my traffic expert, on direct, but I can, if it would please the board.
So...
But Mr. Weisner's not going to answer those questions, because I have another expert, Commissioner Gonzalez.
I thought you were done, which is why I was asking this. But if you, if you have a traffic witness, absolutely.
Okay.
Because I have a lot of questions on it.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, I think the board wants all the direct testimony, then...
So we can offer direct cross as well? Of course. Yeah.
So we're going to go witness by witness, like this is a hearing, and we're going to do this like we do this, right?
Imagine that.
So I...
If this witness has no further direct testimony, has no further direct testimony, I am sure, after the board finishes asking their questions of this witness, counsel is going to bring up all of the things that counsel wants to bring up, that his experts maybe started to talk about. So I guess, are there any other questions for this witness pertaining to direct testimony with respect to the engineering that was testified to so far?
I just have a quick question on the existing... There's an existing dog run by the Chapel Avenue end there that the existing community uses currently?
Yes, there is. I'll answer that question, Commissioner. There is an existing dog run. It was, my understanding is that the current owner of the property has allowed that dog run to be there as a temporary dog run. There is no easement agreement, license agreement, or other, any other form of agreement that legally permits that dog run to remain there. So as part of this development, the dog run will be eliminated. However, it's also my understanding that the current owner of the property, which is New Liberty Urban Renewal, has repeatedly reached out to HOA council to work out some kind of settlement to compensate the existing community for the removal of that dog run. I don't believe there's been any kind of an agreement reached yet in connection with that, but I would defer to HOA council, who's here, to answer any further questions as to that. But it's not my client's, it's not the applicant's obligation through any legal document to continue to allow that dog run to be there.
Or to replace it anywhere else, or...
Or to replace it anywhere else. No, no document. We did not agree, the applicant did not agree to do that with the current owner. The current owner's position is, they will settle it, work it out, take care of it with the HOA.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, thank you, counsel. Counsel, cross? Absolutely. Please. And counsel, before we start with cross, we do have a couple of applications for later on tonight that want to carry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Charles Harrington. Item number 22, case number P-2025-0043, 712, 714 Bergen Avenue. I'm requesting that be carried with preservation of notices to October 7th meeting.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Yes, yes. That's good. Okay, thank you, counsel.
And I have one more, is case number 20. That's P-2024-0247, 76 Cottage Street. I'm requesting that be carried to the October 28th meeting.
Cam? Yes, yes. Okay.
So I have one other on that we're just rolling the dice.
Fingers are crossed on number 15?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, Benjamin Wine of Prime Tuvell and Micali. I'm here requesting that item number 21, which is case P-2025-0083, for minor site plan, be carried with preservation of notice to the October 7th meeting.
Yes, and that is the last item that we can accommodate at that meeting.
Okay, and that's, I don't think you gave the address, counsel, that's 240 Terrace Avenue.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Enjoy your night.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Enjoy your night. Okay. Counsel, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and fellow commissioners. Mr. Weisner?
Counsel, perhaps we should just get your representation on the record.
Oh, sure. As I put on at the start of the hearing, Martin Cabalar, everybody, from Becker, New York, PC. I am counsel for Port Liberté Homeowners Association, Inc. The Homeowners Association is a master association responsible for the common elements and infrastructure of three separate condominium associations that neighbor the applicant's site. That's Port Liberté 1, Port Liberté 2, and Port Liberté 3. Very important distinction to make here tonight is that I only represent Port Liberté Homeowners Association, Inc. I do not represent the individual condominium associations. I also do not represent any individual homeowner. I represent a nonprofit corporation that's responsible for the administration and management of the infrastructure of Port Liberté Homeowners Association, Inc. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Mr. Weisner, just a couple of questions for you. When do you anticipate being able to start construction on this project if the application were approved?
I'm looking at my clients. That's not exactly an engineering question.
I'm not sure if, that's not really a question that...
Let me ask you a different question.
Go ahead.
Do you have an opinion on how long it would take to construct this project as a professional engineer?
It would depend on the phasing of all the units, how quickly, et cetera, but on the order of a year, I would guess.
Okay. Now, you mentioned that the applicant's site is being raised. By how many feet is it being raised?
It varies across the site, but I would say by about three feet.
Okay. And I think you also acknowledge that when raising a site, you are cognizant of the fact that you can't just let stormwater flow off the edge of that now raised site, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And as I understand it, you essentially have two mechanisms that you're proposing to control water off the site. That's one, inlets, and two, use of the golf course wet pond, correct?
Inlets and pipes to the wet pond.
Pipes to the wet pond, okay, correct. Your plans, they have a series of inlets depicted on them that are going to be used to collect that water, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And as part of your analysis here, I take it you conducted conveyance calculations going to the inlets?
We have conveyance calculations from the inlets within the pipes.
Okay. And the same for the inlets going to the wet pond?
It includes the pipes going to the wet ponds.
Okay. And did you, well, different question. The analysis of the conveyance to the inlets, that's an important analysis here, correct?
It's an important analysis on every engineering project, in my opinion.
As is the analysis, in this instance, of conveyance to the wet ponds, right?
Yes, it's an important part of this analysis.
Okay. And your analysis of the conveyance to the inlets, combined with your analysis of the conveyance to the wet pond, that essentially serves, if I understand you correctly, as the basis of your opinion that the applicant would not be letting stormwater flow off the edge of this now raised site? Is that the essence of your opinion here?
Well, and taken in context with the grading plan. The grading plan also depicts how the surface grades will run, and what it shows is that the areas inside the property, near the border of the property, are lower than the surrounding grades, meaning the edge of the property as developed will be slightly lower than its neighbors.
Okay. And so the grading area, the stormwater inlets, and then the inlets flowing to the wet pond, all of that analysis and those calculations, that's critical here, correct?
That's part of the overall analysis and the permit that DEP granted, and part of the site design.
Okay. And that analysis is critical here, because if that analysis is incorrect, that creates a potential for flooding on the neighboring site, does it not?
I think, yes. I mean, if it's incorrect, it would potentially, well, I guess it depends on how incorrect it is. The reality is, these wet ponds take 100 acres of drainage to them. So if you're incorrect by one square foot, that may not have any meaningful impact whatsoever.
Okay. I don't have any further questions for this witness. We will have, as stated earlier, our own expert witness on civil engineering from ONS, Nancy Wong, who will testify as to the site, the grading, the drainage, the calculations, and the analysis that was performed here.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Before we lose you, counsel, I do have another question. I'm sorry, Mr. McCann. Obviously, counsel, you're in front of us often. This is the first time we've heard about a wet pond. So could we just brief the board on exactly what a wet pond is? How much water can it hold? Where does the water go? All that stuff. We're just used to pipes going into pipes into pipes.
Sure. Can I say?
Sure.
So, committee chairman and counsel, I, in light of that question, I'm going to need to know what exhibits we're up to, because I have a new one.
I have 11. Your mic's not on.
We are on A12. What's the chance that we've got more than one exhibit in the queue?
You mean in addition to what's on the screen?
Yeah, the other four that he just had in his Dropbox, or whatever that was, that we haven't talked about yet.
I don't plan to present anything unless I'm asked.
Didn't plan to present this.
Depends on what the questions are, but this, this is all we plan to present right now. So I guess we'll go to A13?
A12.
A12. Oh, we're up to A12, okay.
Unless the chair wants to ask if there's any other maps or information that the applicant has that we would like to see, or something to that effect.
I'm going to keep you guys on your toes on that.
We're calling this the wet pond, wet shed areas?
Watershed.
Watershed. Lot bigger on that screen.
Time to get some readers there, counsel? Time to get some readers?
We're there. I think we're there.
Yeah, we're there.
Damn it, McCann. Thought I was going to make 40.
So this exhibit, which we've titled Wet Pond Watershed Areas, dated 9/9/2015, this is a map that shows the drainage area, the watershed area that goes to wet ponds. The term wet pond generally means it's a, some kind of depression in the ground that's going to hold water, and will always have some amount of water in it. In this case, there are several wet ponds that were designed as part of the golf course and the prior residential developments, that at the time, these wet ponds were thought to have very good environmental quality type characteristics. You send the water there, the water hangs out, the stuff drops out of the water. By the time the next rainfall comes, the clean water dissipates. So the idea behind the wet pond is there's always a permanent pool of water that exists predominantly for water quality purposes. In this case, these wet ponds are part of the conveyance system that takes water from these residential communities through the golf course to the Hudson River. They're directly connected to the Hudson River. This map shows broadly, and I'll clarify, this map was actually prepared by in-site engineering. They're one of the previous engineers that have done work on the residential communities, and this site is a part of a previous application. And this is a map that they used to get a flood hazard permit a few years ago for this very property. That permit expired. It's not the flood hazard permit that we got, but it was part of an officially reviewed document by the DEP, who determined that these wet ponds had a certain capacity. And so they had a capacity at that time that you could send your water to these wet ponds, and that would help with the water quality before it made its way to the Hudson River. DEP has since said, "You can't send them to wet ponds anymore. These are not the right kind of wet ponds. We've changed our rules, we've got better guidance, we want new, different wet ponds." So what we're doing for our project is we're putting individual water quality units on our site before they go to the wet pond. So the wet pond's like a bonus. But the reality is, the wet pond has a permanent amount of water in it, and it's still a depression in the ground, so when you get a heavy rainfall, it's still going to fill up higher, flow out, go into the ground, and then go back down to that permanent pool.
So counsel, is this map not being shown for any type of...
If I can provide some more context for that?
Substantive purpose?
Go ahead, Brian. If I could provide a little more context for what the point of showing this map was? So there are two sets of wet ponds that this project, the Liberty Watch project, will tie into. One on the east side and one on the west side. The one on the east side is shown in red, and the one on the west side is shown in blue. I'm saying "shown" meaning the watershed area. It's all the area that drains to it. The wet pond itself, I'm going to use my mouse, is, for example, this area that I'm circling here. There's another wet pond here that's connected by a pipe, an equalizer pipe, that lets water go back and forth. There's another wet pond down here, next to the residential, and then there's a wet pond on the other side, on the west side of Chapel Avenue, that kind of wraps around in an L-shaped fashion over here. And the point of showing you this is that, and actually it ties into the last question about if the analysis was incorrect, wouldn't that have a major impact? This shows that there's 77 acres in red that goes to these wet ponds. So if you're off by 700 square feet over 77 acres, that's literally a drop in the bucket. It's not going to have any meaningful difference on the outcome of that analysis. And likewise, the blue is 30 acres, and includes all of the Oliver Project and a small portion of the site that fronts Chapel Avenue. And we did this analysis, not because DEP required it, not because it had to be done for some JCMUA comment. They didn't ask for this. It was as an enhancement to show that under an extreme storm event, that even factoring in all this area that goes to the wet ponds, and how much those wet ponds might build up and back up into our site, that site is still not spilling out into the adjacent neighbors.
But just to be clear, Mr. Weisner, you didn't prepare this plan, but you're relying on it for the existence of the wet ponds, correct? They're still there.
For the existence of the wet ponds, and the analysis that was originally done for the wet ponds, that we then recalculated for this project.
And when you say recalculated, what do you mean by that? You did your own calculation?
We did our own model.
Model.
Based on the 168 townhome unit project, not the project that was envisioned before, when this plan was originally done.
So is the purpose of this plan just to articulate where the wet ponds are? And when this plan was prepared, which parts of the property drain to which wet ponds?
That's correct. That was part of our analysis.
Are, is the substantive of this plan still accurate in terms of which portions of the site are going to which wet ponds? Is that, does that make sense? Are you following that question?
Yes. I believe the, the wet ponds, which take a lot of drainage area, shown all in red, but specifically the dark red area from the site, the majority of the site, shown in dark red, drains to the wet ponds to the east, shown on this map.
So the entire area in the dark red on this map is a portion of the project site?
Correct.
And does not include any other property?
Mr. Weisner, the, I think what counsel is asking is, in, in the dark red, that is the site that we're asking for an approval on tonight, correct?
The dark red and the dark blue comprises the 9.5 acres.
Thank you.
Okay.
Which is a small portion of all the water that goes to these water, the wet ponds.
And that dark blue portion of the site would go to a light blue wet pond, and the dark red would go to a light pink wet pond?
That's correct.
And how does it, how does it get there?
There's already pipes from those wet ponds underneath the golf course to the 9.5-acre site that we're proposing the townhomes on. And there's already pipes from those wet ponds out to the Hudson River.
So the stormwater will run from the site through the pipes into the wet ponds?
Correct.
And those, those wet ponds... I'm sorry, those wet ponds and the piping that go to the wet ponds, they're pitched towards the wet ponds?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's no backup from the wet ponds whatsoever?
The backup from the wet ponds is when you get a heavy rainfall and that wet pond fills up, if it fills up part of the pipe, you calculate, or you account for how much that pipe fills up. That's the analysis that's in our stormwater report.
Okay.
That we use to determine, even when that backs up our pipes and our rainfall, the rainfalls on our site, it won't bubble out and run down to the neighbor.
Okay. Understood.
Now, if I understood your testimony, the DEP had an issue with these wet ponds in some technical sense that required you to treat the water before it got to the wet pond?
That's correct.
Can you explain that?
The DEP originally permitted these wet ponds as an, as a quality enhancement. If you sent your water to this wet pond, it met all the quality standards of the regulations. The EP says that's no longer good enough. If you're going to send it to a wet pond, it has to have this characteristic, it has to have this planting, it has to have this, this, this. And these wet ponds were built in a time before those all existed, or were known. So this project, they said, "You can't send your water to the wet pond, even though it was originally permitted to take it, and just say that's good enough for water quality. You have to do better for your water quality." And so we did all the water quality on our site, but the water still can go through the wet pond, you just get no credit for it. It's a conveyance system at this point for us.
So what is it, and how is it, that you're treating the water on-site before it goes into the pipe?
We're using manufactured treatment devices that filter the stormwater.
In the inlet?
In, with, yes, below the inlet. So you capture the water in a certain inlet, you run off the street right into it, it runs through the manufactured treatment device, and then it connects to the pipe that goes to the wet, oh, wet pond, excuse me.
And those features would have to be maintained and operated pursuant to a policy and a procedures as to how to do all of that, and...
That's correct, and that's outlined in a operations manual that the DEP requires you to prepare as part of your permit. We prepared it, it was reviewed and approved, and that has to be filed on county records.
So, Mr. Weisner, just to be clear, so... so even though this is showing the wet ponds that were there from the previous project that was approved for this site, your... The water, the flood hazard permit that your firm obtained on behalf of the developer for this, for the applicant, for this project, relies on the same wet ponds for the wastewater?
For the storm water.
Storm water, I'm sorry, storm water, correct?
So the flood hazard permit that we got acknowledges that the wet ponds are there, but says you don't get the benefit of why it was put there originally. You still have to do water quality on your own. You can still send it through the wet pond, but you don't get to count it as your treatment.
Right, but my question just... I'm a little... It's a little rough. But the transmission of the storm water is going to the wet ponds pursuant to the permit, the flood hazard permit?
That's correct.
So anybody else that's sending water to this wet pond, is that water untreated?
The other projects that are sending it there, yes. They did not pre-treat it before it goes to the wet pond. They got their permits at a time when that was acceptable, including the adjacent community.
But the site that's... That is being developed by the applicant will comply with that quality requirement?
It will, and the DEP verified it does. They wouldn't issue us a permit unless we showed exactly how it complies.
So the... The systems that are treating the water, the maintenance on those systems, you said there's an operations manual, all that. How are they accessed? So you have these systems and devices throughout the site, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're maintained on annual basis, five-year basis?
You have to check them several times a year after significant rainfall events. When they find a certain amount of debris, you have to vacuum them out or clean them out or change a cartridge. So they have access... They have access ports or panels that you can open up visually see, as well as get the equipment in to clean it out.
Okay, so these are reachable?
Yes.
Okay, it's not a dig everything up and...
Correct.
Okay.
It's similar to an inlet. Well, you'll take off the grate. You'll look inside. You can clean it if you need to. You put on the grate, go on with your day.
Okay. And these devices are... Or the inspection and cleaning of these devices, that's reported to the DEP? Is there an authority having jurisdiction that watches over the maintenance of those devices?
I don't believe there's a reporting requirement, but if you are asked to provide proof that you're doing it, I believe they can ask you for it.
The DEP would be that agency?
I guess if there's an issue with the permit, they could do that, yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Weisner, the site as vacant land, there's storm water running off the site at the present time. Is that correct?
There is some infrastructure. There's pipes coming from the wet ponds to the site today. And so some of that runoff on the site today enters those pipes and goes to the wet pond today. But in the future, you have to treat everything that leaves the site or all the motor vehicle surface that leaves the site.
So by developing the property and installing the water quality water quality system for the storm water transmission, you're actually improving the condition of the storm water as it runs into the...
I think the project will provide enhanced water quality compared to what exists today.
Thank you. Just getting to that.
Do you know how much is being channeled into the pipes today and making it to the watershed versus how much is sitting and either going into the vacant ground or pooling or... You wouldn't know that, would you?
I don't have an exact calculation. We compare the proposed project once it's built more than...
That's what I imagined.
Okay, but if...
But it is being treated. Whatever's being captured and being channeled there is being treated, which... I don't know if "treated" is even the right word, but something's happening to it that isn't happening on older projects that are using the same drainage system.
And just so, and the board is crystal clear on this, this site is not even developable without those water treatment devices, correct? Or some kind of cleansing of the storm water?
The rules require any motor vehicle surface area, which obviously to develop the site, you need to have water quality treatment. And it would have to be done on the site because the wet ponds are not viable means to qualify for that treatment.
Okay, gotcha.
I have a quick question, though, on that. You might have already kind of answered it, but I just want to be clear. As you're treating, if that's the word, on your site, the water, are you adding anything to that that's going to then disturb the environment of the actual untreated water that's in the wet pond from the other? I mean, is there anything that has been done to analyze it? You know, what if this water that's treated now is going to do something different to the existing water, whether it's working or not?
So the treatment of the water is to remove what they call suspended solids from it. So it drops out little fine particles of sand or debris before it gets to the... Wherever it's going, in this case, to the wet pond. So adding cleaner water to the wet pond will only allow whatever ability that wet pond has to treat the untreated water that gets to it. It will allow more ability for it to do that.
Got you. So there's no chemical... Nothing is being added?
It's not a washing machine. We're not adding or doing anything like that that has to be rinsed off. It's all mechanical.
Okay, thank you.
Or filtering.
Okay. No. And the wastewater from the site is standard sewer system, correct?
Standard sewer system that will go to the JCMUA pump station.
Okay, very good. Any other questions before we move on? Counsel, I'll give you a cross if you want. Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. My next witness is the project architect.
Okay.
Yeah. Could be done by 9:20. Okay. Yes, I do. Alexander Ovejas, O-V-E-J-A-S.
Is that mic on? Is it on?
Uh, yeah, I guess it is.
Just gotta get closer. Okay, good evening, sir. Your license is current tonight in New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. You're qualified.
Well, just to be a little careful, Mr. Ovejas, you've never testified before this board before, have you?
I have.
Oh, you have?
A long time ago.
He has.
Not necessarily in this building, but in the different buildings.
There's still a couple things that work up here.
All right, save us two minutes.
McCann wasn't the attorney.
Apparently not. Okay, license is current. Mr. Ovejas, you have... You've reviewed and are familiar with the Cave and Point redevelopment plan, correct?
Yes.
And you've also reviewed and are familiar with the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance, correct?
Yes.
And you're an in-house architect at Pulte Homes, correct?
That's correct.
And you're part of the team that drafted the architectural plans for the site?
Yes.
Okay, and you're personally familiar with those plans?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And the plans themselves, just to be a little bit careful, are 11 sheets.
12, actually.
12 sheets? And what's the date of those? What's the last date on those plans?
May 12, 2025.
Okay, I'm going to hand you a document that you actually handed me two minutes ago and just ask you to confirm that. The plans in your hand are the plans that are up on the screen, and they're the plans that you're going to present tonight?
Yes, this is it.
And they're the plans that we're asking the board to approve tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe those are uploaded to the portal as well.
Yes, and they also have been posted on the portal for a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, I'm going to tender these to you, hard copies.
We're going to mark them as A13 or... So A13... Did you say 13 sheets, even though it's showing 12?
12.
12.
12.
Okay.
Yeah. So, Mr. Ovejas, we're not going to use any extraneous exhibits. You're just going to walk the board through the actual architecture of plans that are on the portal, correct?
That's correct.
All right, let's get to it.
All right, so the residential development we are proposing are stacked townhomes with a total of 168 market rate units across 19 buildings. Shown on this exhibit right on the screen, which is labeled as key and building location plan, we have identified the number of stack units within each building as well as the typical building type configuration. Also identified on this exhibit is a typical eight-unit building string that is put together on all levels from first floor up to the roof plan. The four-story stacked townhomes give us the opportunity to provide meaningful living space as well as square footage. At the same time, the homes are well-appointed, featuring contemporary floor plans, upscale finishes, and meaningful fenestrations for natural light. That being said, we are offering two types of floor plans. The lower unit, which we typically market as Lawrence II product, and the upper unit, which we typically market as Sydney II product. And this is when we actually sell the properties. Both these units share a footprint of 24 foot wide by 51 foot deep with an approximate gross square footage of 1,760 square feet and 2,788 square feet respectively. Both units have their own dedicated garage and driveway space as well as covered entry porch, where both units share a common vestibule, as shown here where my cursor is. Those green dots are the main entrances to the units. To further elaborate the floor plans, sharing the next exhibit, which is labeled enlarged floor plans. The Lawrence II product, which is the lower unit, is highlighted yellow. It is a two-story unit, which consists of three bedrooms, three bathrooms, on a slab-on-grade with no basement. The first-floor plan house is a communal spaces, such as living, dining room, kitchen, and bathroom, and the stairs going up on the second floor. The garage is a rear-load entry and is able to house one vehicle. It can accommodate a garbage bin, it's a two-garbage bin, and a wall space to hang a bicycle. Up on the second floor is where all the bedrooms, bathrooms, laundry room, utility room, and rear balcony is situated. The Sydney II product, which is highlighted peach on this exhibit, is a four-story unit, which consists of three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms in a den, and is stacked over the lower unit. The first and second floor plan holds the garage and the stairwell to access the main floor area. The garage is also a rear-load entry and can house one vehicle and also can accommodate two garbage bins and has a bike storage under the stairs. The fourth... The third floor plan is the common communal space that has the living room, dining room, kitchen that is configured in an open concept design. And the fourth floor has all the bedrooms, bathrooms, laundry room, mechanical room are situated. As for aesthetic components, we want to balance the modern design with the neighborhood surrounding scale. The elevations we developed for the stacked townhouses are distinctively semi-urban in flavor, while respectful of transitional location between the existing neighborhood and surrounding community. The facade are contemporary yet traditional in the sense of having traditional slow proof and the use of traditional but sophisticated materials. We are offering various elevation types, and color schemes are shown on this exhibit, which is architectural elevations. The design intent is to maintain each building lively and distinct by introducing different elevation types and material patterns. Horizontal offsets, protruding bay windows in varying brick veneer heights were introduced as well to break the mass and create undulation for additional character. The variation will limit monotonous appearance between each stack unit and buildings. However, the use of similar types of exterior finish and material will be applied consistently throughout development that will capture a unified design look. The finishes included and identified in this exhibit are... I'm just going to zoom in. Brick veneer, horizontal fiber cement siding, fiber cement panel of bay window option, painted metal balcony railing, asphalt shingle roofing system. In addition, we assembled the facade configuration for each building. Again, there's a total of 19 buildings. I showcase on the remainder of the sheets. Each building is put together with elevation type and color scheme selected and provide clear visual on how each building looks. For example, the sheet which is identified as building type 4 elevation, this is the smallest building on site, which has a total of four units. The building utilizes facade D and color scheme 5, which can be referred back on the previous exhibit, which has all the different elevation configuration. The building utilizes two-story height brick veneer fiber cement above, meaningful fenestration for natural lighting. At least that's front facade. And it's clearly shown the main entrance to the front of the building. To the rear of this building, it's clearly shown the garage doors and the balcony is up on the second and third floor. And in the side elevations, we just continue all the finishes as indicated on the facade. The rest of the buildings are dispersed on the remainder of the sheets. For example, next sheet will be building type 6 elevations. This type of building is used for the facade and finishes is used for two types of building, which is building 5 and building 10, and so on. The last exhibit on this presentation is the biggest building on site, which is building type 16, that consists of 16 units. And that concludes my presentation.
We do have some samples of some of the materials, if it would please the board. If it doesn't and you want to move on, we don't have to show them. That's up to you.
Anybody want samples? I mean, they're standard materials we see every meeting. No, we're good on samples, I think, counsel. Fully fire-suppressed buildings?
Yes.
Everything, okay.
Concerned about the balconies, the rails, and the...
The rails and the tie... The rails and the type of rail, yeah.
And the spacing.
Are they usable?
What is usable?
Are the balconies?
Yes, they are usable, yes.
Okay, the commissioner wants to know what the railings would be like, and I think the concern is, Commissioner, that you shouldn't be able to put anything, rest anything, on the railing that could fall down.
Correct.
Or underneath.
Or slip something under.
We've recently learned that the railing can be as close to the ground as one inch.
Yes, I think we talked about that, but do you have something that you can show them regarding the railing?
Let me see, the rear elevation, if we have...
But it's also...
This is the elevation of the rear balcony. So the railing we have typically is obviously, you know, per the code height-wise, and it's a metal balcony railing.
So the gap between the bottom of that railing and the balcony itself, right under the code, it can be four inches?
Four inches, yes.
We want it an inch, and we've been told that that's doable.
Yeah, it can be, definitely it can be doable.
Acknowledged.
Thank you.
I have no other questions, anybody else?
No.
All separately metered, no PTACs, split system?
No PTAC system.
They're not, they're not split systems, though, right?
Split system, what are we doing?
It's a forced air system.
Okay. Okay, counsel, anything else for your witness?
No.
I don't think he has a question about architecture. Counsel?
Anything for architecture, counsel?
No questions, sorry.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mike, you wanna get a break in? Okay, we're just gonna take a quick five-minute break, everybody. We do have a hard cutoff of 10:30. We will not... Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
There he is. Obviously, you know, we won't take any new testimony, open any new applications after 10 o'clock. Okay, just wanna make you aware. Okay, we'll be back in five minutes, everybody. Okay, counsel, go ahead.
Okay. My next witness is the project traffic engineer. And for this witness, I don't have any exhibits to offer, so we're just gonna, we're just gonna rely on the traffic study that has been filed with the board and is on the portal. And my traffic engineer is Carrie Penkey from Langin, and I'm introducing her right now, and...
Any relation?
To Carl, he's my father.
Okay.
Runs in the genes.
Still have to qualify you, but, okay. Okay, if you could, just go through your background and your licensing after Mike swears in.
I do. Yep, Carrie, K-E-R-R-Y, Penkey, P as in Peter, E-H, N as in Nancy, K-E.
Okay, so let's just go through your background, your education, and your licensing.
Of course, I'm a senior project engineer with Langin Engineering. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rowan University. I am licensed in the state of New Jersey in good standing. I've been practicing over 12 years with an expertise in traffic, and I've previously testified before planning boards in New Jersey, including this board.
Okay, excellent, thank you, you're qualified. I don't recall you being in front of the board.
It was virtual.
Okay.
Sci-tech city project, I did.
Gotcha, all right, thank you, you're qualified.
Great, thanks.
Now, counsel, we have marked things that you've uploaded to the portal, so if you wanna mark the traffic study...
Yes, I would, I think that's just a good idea for housekeeping.
We're up to A14.
Okay. So the traffic study that's on the portal will be exhibit A14, okay.
Do we just have a date?
What is it, yeah, it's September 6, 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you. A14.
Okay, Ms. Penkey, give us a summary of A14, the traffic study.
Great, all right, thank you, appreciate the time this evening. The site is located on the north side of Chapel Avenue, where we're providing access through a full-movement driveway. The site, as part of the Port Liberté master plan, previously envisioned 512 units located on the project site, which is actually three times more than what we're proposing as part of the current application, which is 168 units. For the application to support it, we prepared a traffic impact study dated September 6, 2024. That study was prepared in accordance with industry standards and methodologies. As part of that study, we collected existing traffic counts to establish typical traffic operation conditions in the area. We use those existing traffic counts to develop what we called our no-build traffic volumes, which includes background traffic, including the Oliver as an adjacent development, as well as 1.5% growth per year, which we applied to a two-year growth, growing the volumes from 2024 to 2026. This allowed us to provide representative traffic for that no-build condition. Moving off those no-build volumes, we then created site-generated trip estimates for those proposed 168 residential units. We use the nationally-recognized publication by the Institute of Transportation Engineers in the 11th edition of Trip Generation, which was the most current edition of the data at that time. In addition to just developing the straight trip rates for the generation, we actually also accounted for the site's proximity to the ferry terminal, and we actually used location-specific census tract data to develop a reduction of vehicle trips that would be association, associated with the capture, utilizing that transit opportunity to this area. That equated to about a 10% usage from, like I said, the area-specific census tract information. So the total new vehicle trips that we estimated that would be generated by this site is 67 new trips in the weekday morning commute peak hour, and 84 new trips, and this is two-way trips, during the weekday evening peak hour. We added those site trips to that no-build condition to develop our build-conditioned traffic volumes. We then analyzed both the no-build and the build condition, and also accounting for any pedestrian traffic that we collected during our traffic count on the intersection in our analysis. We prepared our traffic study, summarizing our research, our findings, our conclusions, the results of which showed that this proposed development will not significantly alter the traffic operations in the area at the study locations we included in the traffic study. We expect that the intersections will operate at similar overall service, level of service and delays, and additionally, the development's driveway will operate at good levels of service. That's actually all I have for tonight, so wanted to keep it nice and quick to be able to answer any questions, so that ends my direct.
Thank you. When did the Oliver come online?
I'm not sure the completed construction date, but in 2024, when we did the traffic counts, it was under construction.
Yeah, it's still was under construction, so that's not included in the...
We included it as background traffic, so we added it to be included in our no-build condition, so it's included in the background of our build, so we did account for that.
And... Obviously, there's no school traffic going there, but did you account for school traffic leaving the sites?
So we, our counts were conducted in August, it's the time when we could take them. Given the sites, there's no immediate proximity to a school, we would expect any traffic associated with a school to be very minimal, and we wouldn't expect it to change the conclusions and findings of the study.
But obviously, I don't know if, see, I wish I had Pat's tomato here right now. I don't know if kids are bused from there to go to school, if people are driving their kids to school, so, you know, obviously, there's traffic, you know, for school transit is what I'm talking about. I don't think there's anything backing up for drop-offs at school, there's nothing near there. But definitely, there should be a count of, you know, families driving their kids to school every day.
Yeah, it would be minimal, and we did include a 1.5% background growth rate at the intersection, and in addition to the Oliver, clearly, it's a dented street, there's nothing else there, so that 1.5% in this case could account for any additional traffic associated with the school.
Okay. All right, anybody else, any questions?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of comments. So, I'm not sure if you heard earlier, when I kind of started to look at the September 5th traffic study from Brightview Engineering. I'm very familiar, Chapel Ave is just a one way to get to Port Liberté, to get to the new restaurant Hudson House, to get to now the Oliver, to get now to this project. And right on the corner there, Cave and Point and Chapel, is the field, our big field, that is being, is used by all football teams and baseball and soccer plays there, play there, and events happen there all the time. The fact that you conducted the study in August, I think you said, right? Yeah, it's very misleading, in my opinion, and I'll tell you why. I am one of the team doctors for several of these high schools, and when there's a game there, it is absolutely impossible to get, not only to the field, but I feel really bad for people who live in Port Liberté, 'cause they cannot get out. And I can only imagine if there was a major catastrophic event happening, like something crazy happening at Port Liberté or at Hudson House, for example, where there's weddings all the time. Not sure if you accounted for that. That's a, it's a wedding venue, and there's weddings three times or four times a week at that place. And it's packed with limos going there, cars parking there. Not to talk about the people who live in Port Liberté, but if there's a game there, and it's St. Peter's Prep, and let's say Bergen County or Don Bosco, there are, you can't, I'm at the Marina, and there's a line of cars coming in. You can't get in. And so I don't know that this traffic study was, you know, I mean, I thank you for providing it, but I do, do wanted to mention that for the record, that, you know, I'm not sure that that's really accurate, if it wasn't, you know, done during school. I don't think that students are bused there, I might be wrong, but I do know that that field is used by so many students, most, most of the, most months of the year.
So I'd be happy to address this. So, in the traffic study, we analyzed peak commute time periods, so what happens during the peak time periods of the day, whereas in the case of the, at the Ance Street, the venue, which you said is used a lot for weddings, those events would not occur during peak commute hours, they'd occur probably Friday weekends, you know, the peak of this development would not overlap with the peak of what happens there, and it was open operating when we did do our traffic counts. As it relates to the field, the field traffic is gonna vary by day, week, season, you know, there's no way to account for that. It has different times, it can peak throughout the day, it could be well after the commute period, well before school, school ends earlier than people drive home from work necessarily. So what we do in a traffic study is to analyze the peak commute peak hours, which is what we did in analyzing typical conditions. So we feel we have addressed the typical conditions, but that aside, the relative impact of this development, what we found with the trip generation, it's not gonna significantly alter what's already occurring today in the existing condition.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, so that's the conclusion of the report, is that we're not gonna see a significant alteration with the traffic that this new site will generate, because it's not gonna generate a significant amount, and it's not gonna change what's already happening out there.
I understand when peak, when these studies are done, but for the record, it's concerning to me, because I'm talking about non-peak times, I know that's not your report, but it's really bad now, so that was just for the record.
Anybody else, any questions?
But Carrie, just...
I'm sorry, ma'am, we can't, public comments not open right now.
Public, ma'am.
Ms. Penkey, just to be clear, what I think you're saying is, and what the commissioner's saying is, there might be some traffic issues along that road that are already there, whether this project is constructed or not.
That's correct.
And I think what you're saying is, by adding this project on that road, it's not gonna signif, it's not gonna make those, those conditions significantly worse, correct?
Correct.
So, so the, the problem that's there is pre-existing, and it may exist whether this project is built or not.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's say that it did make it worse. What if the study were to prove out that this has created a significant impact on traffic? Is there something that, as a traffic engineer, would be done to offset that impact?
So the intersection that everyone's talking about, back in, I think it was 2002, the city redesigned the intersection, which actually reduced vehicle capacity, and probably is a reason for a lot of these issues, they removed the left-turn lanes on Cave and Point Road, which obviously takes away capacity of people being able to store in there and move in there. So the priority of the city with that design was to increase bike connectivity and bike safety, and as a result, it results in that reduction, so it's a bit limited geometrically what you can improve there. Timing-wise, it's a bit limited, too, because the demand is on all sides. There's, it's, from what we found in our study, it's operating at a pretty optimized timing, given the volume there, but the conclusions of what we found is, what this site, in reality, based on IT data of what it would generate, it's not gonna significantly alter what's already happening there.
So it's not gonna change the level of service at the intersection or on the roadway system, is what you're saying? The additional cars, 'cause we all agree that the site's gonna bring additional cars, right?
Correct.
But it's not going to impact the actual level of service, 'cause there's levels of service to intersections and roadways, right?
Yes, the overall level of service of the intersection will be pretty similar.
So when we talk about levels of service, A, B, D, or E, can you just explain how you get from a D to an E?
Yeah, so a lot of it's related to the capacity, so, you know, each lane, each approach has a certain level of capacity that it can handle, and for each level, like a level service is based on a seconds, so a level service F, to get to that, it's over 80 seconds, the delay would be reported. So as you add volume to a lane movement, you're decreasing the available capacity, which is how you get the calculations for the level service and delay. So what we're saying with the traffic study is, what we're adding to it is not gonna significantly alter the capacity at that intersection, and it's gonna operate at similar overall level of service.
And if it were to negatively impact that and create a situation where you go from one level of service to another level of service, then we'd be looking to mitigate that through some kind of control, either at that intersection or elsewhere on the roadway system, is that fair?
If you had that situation, yes, but in my professional opinion, that situation is not occurring with the site.
But, but also, Ms. Penkey, if, there's a, it depends on if there's a, if there's a C level of service and a D level of service, the difference between those level of services in some cases could be less than five seconds, is that correct?
Correct, if you're at the threshold for one, a five-second could push the other, but I was referring to the overall level of service of the intersection.
I understand, I just wanted to make a point that there, there is a, there is a fine line in some cases between D and E.
That's correct, without showing still a significant impact.
Which, which a commuter, which a person in a car, if it was the bottom of the D threshold and the top of the E, they wouldn't even notice the difference, would they?
Correct.
Sounds like my child that says a B+ is like an A.
Hoping you won't know the difference.
Just to be clear on this, we were adding, we're adding 168 more units to this project?
168 more units.
We have two parkings per unit.
I was gonna say, to be fair, yes, there are 336 spaces... for the unit owners and 80 spaces for guests, because there has to be guest parking, because there's no parking on Chapel Ave.
Just to make sure that there were, had the numbers correct. Okay.
So we need to get the cars off Chapel Ave for people visiting.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Counsel, do you have a cross?
Sure.
Good evening, Ms. Pinky. How are you doing?
Good evening.
Ms. Pinky, how many times have you been out to the proposed site?
Probably four or five times though.
Okay. And your study was based on traffic counts that were collected at Caven Point Road and Chapel Avenue on August 6, 2024, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just that one date?
Yes.
Okay. And the traffic counts, those were conducted between the hours of 6:00 to 9:00 AM and 3:00 to 7:00 PM, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that was the only intersection that was studied as part of that traffic count?
That's correct.
Okay. And you did not conduct a traffic count on any other day, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Or at any other times?
Correct.
I take it then you also didn't conduct any type of continuous counts over a multiple day period, say a seven day count or a 14 day count, for example?
That's correct.
And as Mr. Gonzalez noted, local schools, they were not in session when the traffic count was conducted, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And at the time of the traffic count, were you, were you physically present at the site?
No.
Okay. Was somebody from your office physically present?
Uh, no, we use a traffic count vendor.
Okay. Do you know whether any of the athletic fields were in use at the time of the traffic count?
I do not.
Okay. Do you know whether those fields are used during what you described as the peak hours, specifically being that late peak hour from 3:00 to 7:00 PM?
After school hours, I would expect it's used in some capacity, yes.
But you don't know how much or when or how often?
It would vary by day.
Okay. And one last question was you, you mentioned that you utilized a growth rate, I think of 1.5% for two years, correct?
Correct.
And that was 2024 through 2026, correct?
Correct.
And that, the purpose of that is to consider, as I take it from your report, baseline future volumes through 2026. Is that accurate?
Uh, correct.
Okay. Is it your understanding that this project would be approved, constructed, and fully occupied by the end of 2026 then?
The idea is that it would be a, a two-year growth from the time it existed in traffic counts. Whether the approvals happened in that time, not to say, but in, in this case, considering Chapel Ave is a dead end street, we accounted for very conservative growth with the 1.5 cents as, as well as the Oliver in the background.
If, for example, you came to understand that it wasn't going to be completed till 2027 or 2028, would you need to adjust the growth rate in your report?
I would not adjust that unless we did new traffic counts. And then I would do two years from that.
Two years from that date?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, follow up anything?
No further questions from this witness.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate the time tonight.
Next witness is the project planner.
Sure.
I do. Sean S.E.A.N. Moronski, M.O.R.O.N.S.K.I.
Mr. Moronski, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
And Mr. Moronski, you've testified before this board before, correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And you're the, you're the planner on the Langin team that worked on this project?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And in so doing, have you reviewed the Caven Point redevelopment plan?
Yes, I did.
And have you reviewed the Jersey City land development ordinance?
Yes.
Sorry, I lost my notes here. Oh, and have you reviewed the civil plans that we are asking the board to approve tonight?
Yes, I did.
And have you reviewed the architectural plans?
Yes.
And have you done your own zoning analysis of those plans for compliance with the redevelopment plan and the land development ordinance?
I have.
Okay. And have you concluded your, in your analysis that there are no deviations from the redevelopment plan required?
Yes, with regards to compliance with the Caven Point redevelopment plan, as Mr. Weisner went through the, the zoning table that was on the plans. The plan as presented met all of the requirements as was outlined on the zoning table. Also with regards to the Port Liberté master plan, there are two requirements that are governed by that master plan having to do with density and building coverage. And that covers the entirety of the redevelopment area. And this, the site plan application actually reduces the overall density and building coverage of the redevelopment area than was origi-, than was previously anticipated.
Right. So we're not, you're not testifying about the master plan yet, but what you're saying is because of the requirements in the master plan, the site plan application and approval is reducing the density?
Correct.
Okay. And does the same go for building coverage?
Yes, the building coverage is also reduced.
Does the project have sufficient landscaping around the parking facilities?
Yes, it does. And note, as was previously shown on the exhibit that Mr. Weisner exhibit showed. And there's also the GAR, the green area ratio calculation, which shows that the plan exceeds the minimum 0.25 that's required at 0.37.
And in your professional opinion, does the location of the buildings as proposed on the site plan, it was a proper consideration in connection with the relationship to the surrounding community?
Yes, it was.
And was that, was the applicant required to flip the buildings around so the frontages of the, the buildings faced the existing community? Or could it have had the rear of those buildings face the existing community?
It could have had the rear of the buildings face the existing community. But as it, as it is designed, from an aesthetic point of view, from a functional point of view, the plan that is offered is preferred.
And does the plan preserve the skylines as one of the, it's one of the goals of the redevelopment plan, correct?
It, it is. And the original, the plan allows for heights up to 200 feet high. What is being proposed, four stories, 56 feet in height is substantially lower than what the plan permits.
And when we talk about sightlines and, and those kinds of things, are we just talking about within the project area? Are we talking about preserving sightlines for the, that area of the city?
I, I, you're looking at the overall perspective in terms of sightlines. Because while the redevelopment plan mentions preserving views throughout the entirety of the redevelopment plan area, you also have in previous master plan documents, preserving view sheds as you enter Jersey City and from other sections of Jersey City. So there is certainly a benefit in this design, a public benefit, I would say, of working to preserve the view shed.
Because the buildings are only 56
Correct.
feet high instead of what could be 150 feet high.
Or 200 feet high.
Or high.
15 stories, yes.
Correct. Thank you. I have no further questions of Mr. Moronski.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Counsel, just for the record, can we clarify that the master plan that was being mentioned is the Caven Point master pa-, plan under the redevelopment plan and not the master plan of the city?
Mr. Moronski?
Yes, that is correct. That is the Caven, Caven Point redevelopment plan.
Sorry about that. Yes.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay. Any questions before we go to cross? Okay. Thank you. Counsel, you have a cross?
I don't have any cross for this witness.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McCann?
That concludes my presentation.
Okay. 9:52. Counsel, talk to me. We're at 9:52.
I have a, a brief statement of the case that I'll want to make just shortly to open with.
Okay.
And I have three witnesses. Probably accomplish those three in two hours. It's three witnesses. That's not bad. I mean.
No, it's not terrible. It's not terrible.
Sorry. Yeah, I have three witnesses to present. I have a traffic engineer. You guys have the report from my traffic engineer. I have a civil engineer, also have that from ONS. And then I have a professional planner who I want to present.
Okay. Do we want to at least get opening statement? Or do we want to save that for the next meeting?
It's up to you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if you're asking me, Chair, I would say there's no point in allowing counsel to speak for five minutes and then adjourning and starting with his witnesses the next go around.
Obviously. Try to say it twice.
Right. He's going to say, he's going to say it again. I mean, you know, these guys charged by the letter.
Right?
I, I guess if you're asking me, I would say let's call it a night.
Oh, thank you, Mr. McCann.
All right. Thanks. Yeah, no, we appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. All right. Do we have a date, Cam? We would have to go to October 28th.
I'm going to ask this, Jared, and you may think it's nuts, but we created a special meeting for that Bright Street project. Given the complexities and the timing of all this, might it be an idea to consider to have its own meeting?
I think we should ask the entire board that before I commit to giving up another night of my time and away from my family. So that's, it'll probably be a hard no for me. But, you know, as much as I love this city, two nights a month are enough. So, Cam. That's, Commissioner, that's not something we're going to discuss in a public forum. That comes to scheduling the meetings.
Well, no, you asked to poll people.
Okay.
You got two opinions.
Okay, so I take that back.
There's more than two.
So I take that back then, Commissioner. We're going to discuss that in scheduling, not in a public forum. Because who's going to pay for the special meeting?
Well, again, it was an ask. You polled one other member of the board. She said no, and then you moved on. So that's not a majority, too.
Okay.
So if you would ask the rest of the board and if they
Okay.
favored.
Board, go ahead, guys.
Let me start with me. No.
How about it?
That's a hard no.
That's a no for me.
Okay.
Sounds like a majority.
Thank you. So let's move on. Okay. So
October 28th.
October 28th. All right.
5:30.
Same time. 5:30. Always 5:30.
We have to go first?
Pushing your luck now. Maybe. I'm sure we're going to have extensions and stuff like that before. Yeah, I mean, we can't tie up the rest of the calendar year with you guys.
And just so you know, we really do appreciate the fact that you sat here and listened to this for over three hours. Thank you.
What happens? All right. Thank you. Thank you, guys. So we'll see you on the 28th. Mr. Harrington?
For the record, I just want to state that there won't be any notice further than that announcement.
This, this is an open application. We're carrying notice tonight. There's no new notice. This is just continuing on. This is your notice that this will be October 28th. Mr. Harrington, how much do you want to get in?
I'm sorry?
How much do you want to get in on this? On your application? Do you want to carry your application? Do you want to move forward with at least an opening statement or something to get it on the record?
Yeah, maybe if, if, at the very least, if I could get an opening statement and then kind of get, you know, now, now I'm an active application to, you know, move it along.
Sure.
And I'll defer to, because it's a very straightforward application.
You certainly need more than 15 minutes though. And I know what your time and my time are different. So, you know, if we could, let's just get an opening statement, get you in the queue when you're active.
Okay.
All right. So let's call item 15, this case P2024. Yeah, I'm on the right one. P2024-0082 preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for 388 7th Street.
Okay. For the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant, I do have the public notices that I can give to counsel to mark into the record. I, I know for the record, this was scheduled on August 12th and then carried to August 26th and then carried further to tonight.
Jesus Christ. Yes. I would have to guess. Yes.
Yeah, right?
You're probably out. Okay.
Counsel, as is my practice, I do have a conflict due to the location of this property, where it's located within the city. So I have to recuse and I'll leave you in the capable hands of the chair.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. So, Cam, have you reviewed notice? Is this your application? No, this is Jenru's application. Matt, you're filling in for Jenru?
That's correct.
Have you or Jenru had a chance to review notices? Santo has to recuse on this application due to its location.
I have not, so let me take a look now.
And counsel, while that's happening, obviously, we're comfortable moving forward without counsel. If at any time we feel like we need to consult counsel, we'll consult outside counsel and we'll have to carry the application until we can get outside counsel here.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
This item was noticed for August 12th and preserved for today?
It was a notice for August 12th, then carried on the agenda to the 26th and then further carried to today.
Notice seems to be in order.
Okay. Thank you. We'll mark the notice A1. Okay, go ahead, counsel.
Okay. So the, the project that's before you tonight is, it's for the property located at the corner 7th Street and, and Division Street in what's called the Enos Jones redevelopment plan. The, I know for the record that my, my client owns the property. They have been designated as the redeveloper by the JCRA, which is a requirement of the redevelopment plan. They also own a property catty corner to this that fronts on Enos Jones, which that application is, is not before you tonight, but, but shortly will be. So we have a couple of projects going on here within the, within the area. It is a proposed eight-story building with 31 residential units and five parking spaces. It is proposing to take advantage of, of bonus C within the Enos Jones redevelopment plan. If you're not familiar with the plan, this, this plan was created some years ago so that there would be provisions so that contributions would be made to the JCRA as the escrow agent, so that those funds could be used to improve Enos Jones Park. And that's, that's what you, you will have before you as part of this application. There are some deviations that, that we are requesting, some, somewhat related that the property is within the floodplain. So the ground floor cannot be a, a residential use. So we're using the ground floor for alternative uses as you'll have your utilities, you'll have your lobby, but parking as well, because you can't have a residential use there. We are asking for an additional Uh, we are asking for an additional story, um, uh, as part of the application. But you'll see during the presentation, we, your, the net result is, is seven floors of residential use, which if it were not in a floodplain, you, you could have that. So it's consistent with the intent, uh, of, of the, of the plan. Uh, it has, we have been working with, um, with the planning department for some time on this. And as, as noted, we, we are already designated as the redeveloper, uh, of the project. So when we continue the presentation, I, I do have my architect, Mr. Vandermark and, uh, Mr. Bellamy, um, our, our, um, our planner. And I have a few other, um, professionals that will be available for witnesses depending on the, the timing and, and what, what the, uh, the board would prefer and who, who they would like to, uh, hear from at that time. So that, that's the crux of it. Uh, we are, you know, anxious to, to move forward. My, my client, um, you probably know it's, uh, everybody knows Ziggy. Um, the, uh, uh, it's the boxing, um,
Oh, yeah.
So he owns, it's Catty Corner. That's the other property. So this is a vacant parking lot.
Okay.
So
Not only boxing, but he has the premier auto body shop in the world.
Yeah, so
He's Polish.
Yeah, so he's, he's here tonight. He, he is, uh, we've got a great team together. Uh, they're bringing in, you know, materials and designs from Poland. So it's, it's really both of these projects, uh, are, he's anxious to, to get approved and get started.
Okay, understood. So, uh, with that, we're gonna carry you to like, um, Cam.
It would be the 28th.
Of October.
Of October.
This will be listed as old business?
So I think, no offense to your colleague, I think we can, half hour?
Yeah, we, we will, uh, absolutely, we can get out of the way in a half an hour.
Okay.
And that's why I think it's just Mr. Vandermark and Mr. Bellamy and then open it up for the board's questions to the other professionals.
Okay, yeah, let's get this, uh, up earlier.
It'll be the old, old business before the new, old business.
Yeah. Okay, so let's put this before, uh, Cam's application, please.
Understood.
All right, thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
So let's move on to memorialization of resolutions.
Sir, I'd like to be commotion to approve the following resolutions. I have six. Cam, is that correct?
Yes.
Resolution number one of the planning board of the city of Jersey City is for approval and recommendation of amendments to chapter 345 dash 46 of the land development ordinance regarding expansion of allowed uses in NC, uh, 1 district to align with those in NC 2 district with floor amendment case P2025 dash 0155. Second resolution of the planning board of the city of Jersey City, applicant city of Jersey City for minor subdivision approval with C variances, block 8002, lot 1, block 8002, proposed lots 1 dot 01, 1 dot 02 and, uh, 595 Newark Ave, case number on that is P2025 dash 0001. Resolution number three of the planning board of the city of Jersey City, applicant is Tay Laura Gary and Crystal O'Brien for minor site plan approval at 294 Grand Street, block 14105, lot 2, Jersey City, New Jersey, case number P2024 dash 0218. Uh, fourth resolution of the city of Jersey City planning board in the matter of 978 dash 980, Summit Holdings LLC, application number P2024 dash 0231 and P2024 dash 0233, decided August 12, 2025. Memorialized September 9, 2025, application for minor subdivision approval and preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances and design waiver exception relief. Resolution number five of the planning board of the city of Jersey City, applicant is Sunil Kumar Patel for extension of final major site plan approval with variances at 306 dash 3, uh, 10, 310 Newark Ave, Jersey City, New Jersey, 9902, lot 1, case number P2025 dash 0153. And resolution number six, final resolution of the planning board of the city of Jersey City approving a one-year site plan extension with a preliminary and final major site plan approval with conditions, uh, applicant L K Culver LLC for approval of a one-year site plan extension of the previously approved preliminary and final major site plan with conditions, uh, property at 212 dash 238 Culver Ave, block 21708, lots 18 and 19 dot 09, case number P2025 dash 0142.
Okay, we have a motion and a second roll call, please, Cam.
Please, Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin, Commissioner Wick, Commissioner Lipsky, Commissioner Patel, and Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor to memorialize resolutions.
All right, do we need an executive session, anybody? Okay, motion, second? All right, thank you, guys. We're adjourned.
Cam, I have one more for you.
I have to say, if we can ask, we just danced video and I was like, you know.
So that, that decision shouldn't come from this board. That comes from the
If you had said to me, well, I mean, if I had asked
Understood.
If I'm nuts, if you were to, you know, Commissioner, I think you're nuts or diplomatically, you know.
Thank you.
I don't think that should be associated then. I would have just thrown it out. But then you had said, whatever word you said, no, I'm making Once you entertain me, then I said, go the full distance. So anyway.
All right, you too. Camera's off, Cam.